I know, I cleaned that thing up.
Did you like it? Say something!
While this was playing, and I saw it at home, I was thinking about calling Michael and saying, "You've got to see this." And then I saw who the producers and directors were, and I thought, "Oh, he's probably already seen it."
It's been four times, a couple times by now. Anyway, we're really proud of it. We think it really represents our city very, very well. We hope to get lots more views than the 530 we have. So, without further delay, try to move things along.
Kelly?
Is there a way to put that on the web and people could click on each house separately as they wanted?
Maybe. Why would you want to do that?
Because then you can see each one whenever you want to. A realtor could say, "Hey, go look at this as a possibility for Littleton." They wouldn't have to watch whenever it's going to show up on the TV.
Yeah, I suppose we could ask Doug to edit it down and break it into six different videos instead of one video. We could do it like that.
There's always fast-forward, though, Peggy. There's always fast-forward or fast backward.
Jim, what do you know about fast-forward on a computer?
Press this little button, makes it go faster.
Okay, we don't look into it.
Phil?
I was going to ask, what's the search that you do on YouTube to find it?
Do I have to know the answer to that?
Kathy can send it to us.
Littleton Dream Home.
Yeah, on the bottom of every page, there's three little social media logos, and one of them is YouTube. You just click on that, and it'll take you to the YouTube, the city's YouTube page.
Nicely done.
Yeah, it's good.
Very nice.
All little HGTV.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea how much those houses would cost now?
Well...
I mean, the finished versions?
Certainly, several of them are very expensive. I never asked any of the homeowners what their houses were. I don't know. I could take a wild guess. But there's a couple. I mean, they're expensive houses.
And how about the original, the purchase price initially?
I never asked any of them what they bought.
I'm just curious. I mean, it's not like everybody's going to walk in and come to Littleton and be able to even afford to buy them initially.
Yeah. But I think there's a variety of price ranges there, too. Sure.
Thanks, Kelly.
Unless there's anything else about the video, we want to talk about the city's brand. We've been involved in this process since about October or November. And we work with fine folks from Philosophy, Communications. There, I'm going to introduce them all in a minute. It was really a great experience for our staff. I think this is something that we all, everyone in the city who does graphics, publishing, design, had kind of felt like the city needed a brand for a really long time. There really wasn't the impetus, I guess, to do that. Michael sort of let us loose and let us go with this. And I'm going to introduce the folks from Philosophy. They're going to tell you about the process that we've gone through, literally up to today, from about October to today. So Jen Lester is the president of the company. And then she's joined here today by Randall and Carissa. And they're going to show you a PowerPoint presentation of what we did to get where we are now. And while they're getting that set up, I'm going to hand out to you a couple of things. "Cut off the press" is our brand book, which they're going to go through in three locations.
Thank you.
Chris is also going to hand you out an FAQ on this process. You know where to get them.
Thank you.
Are you here?
Oh, boy, oh, boy.
You just keep following along with this. If you don't, just leave it to your mom.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are we ready, Kelly?
Does anyone have a book?
And you guys will need to use the handheld.
You should turn it on.
It's on.
Well, perfect. So as Kelly said...
Hold it closer. Yeah, she blew into it.
Is it not on?
No, it wasn't. You blew into it. I could hear you. Oh, that was you? Okay.
We can always hold this one.
No, you can't.
Go ahead. You can hold the one he's got. And Kelly will work on that one.
This is interesting. All right. Well, let me introduce. I'm Jennifer Lester with Philosophy Communication. This is my partner Randall Urclins and Carissa Geiger. As Kelly said, I've owned Philosophy Communication for 13 years. And we have a history in branding and marketing, big-name brands, everything from big-name brands to smaller brands. So we're glad to be here today. And we were so glad to participate in the process with the Littleton Committee. So we're going to jump in, and we're going to talk a little bit about why brand Littleton. I mean, we were fine the way we were, right? We had, everything is great. This is a great place to live. I mean, did we really need to do this? Did we need to spend the money and rebrand? And what was the point of it? So the point of rebranding is really taking an active role in what people are saying about you. You are actively managing your brand. You're choosing to attract the type of people that you want to attract. You're choosing to attract the type of businesses that you want to attract. There's an economic growth factor. There's a way that you are showing and portraying to people that you're investing in your houses, you're investing in your real estate, you're investing in your businesses. So there's a reason why cities actively manage their reputation. And the cities that don't, they're just allowing people to make up stuff about themselves. You know, you are choosing to tell people what to think and experience and feel about Littleton when they're here. So that is why you want to rebrand a city.
We're going to pass this around. It'll be a hot potato.
You can try this one. This one works. So we started this process with a DU brand audit. And they did some research and found that currently Littleton does not have a brand. So the committee that we worked with with Littleton actually went out and did a citizen analysis survey and also did a business owner survey. And really, a lot of data that came back all showed that the business owners and the citizens wanted more marketing initiatives from the city.
Before we can look at branding, I thought we would look at a practical example of branding. So everybody, take a look. Take a break from your brand book for a moment and look at the screen. What is your expectation about how fresh the eggs are going to be when you pull up to this location?
Still warm.
Nice.
Exactly. "Still warm," he said.
That's right.
So branding, this is a great example at its most basic level. This is branding. It's not a logo for a farm, but basically, there's a message and a tone. And it's influenced by the environment that it's in. So let's see what happens if we change the message. Computer repair. So would you trust your iPhone there? Do you think they have the latest repair services at the same location? So it's a great example of how the message can be influenced by the tone and environment that the message is in. So I thought we'd start with, before we get into the Littleton brand, let's take a look at some common brands. I bet everybody in here has already reacted to all four of these brands. Does anybody remember the tagline for KFC? Finger-looking-good. So they've done a really great job managing their brand. I don't even know if they use that tagline anymore, but we all remember it. Disney...
Now it's, "I ate the bones."
That might be a seasonal campaign. Disney, we can think of trips to Disneyland, Mickey Mouse. Chevy has just recently changed their tagline because of going to an international market. The Chevy Runs Deep didn't work outside of our borders very well, so they changed it. And then BP, what do you think we all think about BP?
The Gulf of Mexico.
Okay, Gulf of Mexico. But until then, what did we think about it? Something different. So they're having an issue managing their brand. But this is a great example of how we've all come to know brands and the power of brands and how people manage brands. So what does it look like for cities? And we showed you these because these are obviously examples of companies that spend money managing their brand. Here is four cities: San Antonio, New York, Jacksonville, and Las Vegas. These are good examples of cities that have managed their brands effectively. Isle of New York's been around for a long time. It's synonymous with, like, the Big Apple, if you said that. It's no other city. Of course, Philadelphia has the City of Love. And Las Vegas has a lot of different campaigns, ranging from the City of Sin to, you know, "What happens here stays here," and all that good stuff. But they've managed that brand very well. So what does it look like when we get to our neighbors? You know, we might think, "Well, that's all good and fine for Las Vegas." But what happens around Littleton? Well, here's a collection of logos and sometimes taglines, if we could read them. They're a little bit small. But we're not going to spend a lot of time on that today. But it just goes to show you that our neighbors and some of the cities that are surrounding in the area and the state and the front range have done a better job actively managing their brand. Some better than some others. Some look dated. Inglewood's been around for a long time. We've got the history on that logo. And we think they're changing it. That was a rumor, but time will tell. Centennial, I think, is going through a rebranding. And a lot of these have been around for a long time. So it just gives you an idea of what some of the surrounding cities that are competing for share of mine for business, residents, and tourism are offering. So our process.
So the process. As Kelly mentioned, this is about a seven-month process total. We started out with a brand audit with our committee for a full day, just evaluating the current brand and what Littleton is currently doing. And then after that, for a few months, we followed up with industry analysis. And this is when we really got out on the streets of Littleton and interviewed citizens, visitors. We talked to business owners in the area. We also did social media polls, talked to previous, you know, city members and non-residents, and pulled a lot of data to really help us build the brand identity for Littleton. And the results of the brand audit were the core values. And some of these core values, you might say, "Well, we've been saying that for a while." But now, it's about the drumbeat and everybody getting unified and saying the same thing on the same page. And that's how we're really going to make the dollars and attract the type of people that we want to attract here and make the right decisions that we want to make here. So our core values: strong sense of community, that fits us, right? Small-town feeling, small-town feeling. Now, that's very, very deliberate. It's not "small-town," "small-town feeling." Parks, trails, and open space are vibrant and historic downtown. It's very important to talk about the vibrancy. It feels modern. There's something moving and happening here. Top-rated schools, and of course, the location. So these are all the core values that came out of talking in the brand audit, industry analysis process that Carissa just talked about. That is, that came from residents, non-residents, and all in the surveys. These are the things that we really want to leverage and maximize to attract. It's not just about, you know, it is, you know, business growth. It's about the right kind of business growth and people that are also going to agree to these things. So the positioning statement after the core values and the industry analysis process takes place. And that's where we look at, "Where are we now? Where could we be? How can we get there? And what are the results that we want to happen, that have happened?" And then the ultimate, this is our internal guide, and this is the positioning statement. For residents, business owners, visitors who want a small-town feeling, close to the city, Littleton is the community that embraces history with a modern twist. Because only Littleton has a vibrant downtown, top-ranked schools in Colorado, and an open, active trail system. Highlands Ranch can't say this, people. Only Littleton can. This is, we got to own it. This is us. This is not Inglewood. This is not Centennial. This is Littleton. This is how we are going to set ourselves apart. This is how we're going to attract the type of businesses we want to, the tourists to come down and visit. These are the things that are important to us.
So where did that lead us? To the logo. Everybody in the room has seen the logo. You have the brand book in front of you. But before we start it with the logo, I thought we'd look at some of where we were at. Top left is obviously your city seal. That's the original. Then we evolved into your top right, which are three men, which evolved to three men in a tub, is what we hear it's called. Or let's just say, three men in a circle. Three men bound together. And then it evolved to a typeface, which is the current, until this moment, city of Littleton. And you might be asking yourself, "Well, what was wrong with that one?" Because it's recent, in the last decade. Well, it's only a typeface. And so we wanted to associate a mark with it, something that was ownable versus just a typeface. And we were also hearing that some people were just assigning their own typefaces when they were using the logo because it was just easy to type it out, "Times New Roman," as we've all done, right? We're all guilty of that one. So what we do is lock up the city of Littleton typeface with a logo, which you'll see here. And so we use the exact same typeface, Littleton, Utopia font, in case anyone cares in the room. That's your font. And so we didn't change it. But what we did was we added the mark above it, which is first and foremost, a capital L. Can't be mistaken. It's an L. And it's a very festive L. We could talk for hours about just this mark, but I'll sum it up in just two parts. The name, Littleton, which didn't change. Our color palette, which is red and black, and we've added yellow. So the colors haven't changed. And then the L-mark. Now, the reason why we didn't change the colors is because there's a lot of materials floating around the city with the old logo. And we didn't want to cost the city a lot of investment right away. What we're suggesting is rolling out the new logo as things wear out and as you need them. If you have 10 reams of letterhead, use them and then replace it. And I believe the print shop upstairs is helping redesign all of the pieces. So as things wear out and get used up, they will be replaced with the new logos. As you saw when you came in today, the first truck is outside already. The tall part of the logo represents the city being solid and buildings. And then the two swooshes are very festive, almost like a festive flag, represent the trails, open space, and the river that goes next to the trails. And so it makes a great place for people to come and use. And we know Mayor Brinkman is avid user of the trail system as we went on a bike ride with her back in October. And then the tagline. Let's talk about the tagline. What does it mean for you?
The "Anything but little." So "anything but little" is the tagline that came out of all the research that we conducted as well and the sort of the resident perceptions. Anything but little is the big idea. It plays on the name Littleton, of course. But then it also has a sense of irony that the things that happen here are anything but little. Big ideas happen here. It's somewhat aspirational. It cues to being bigger than we currently are. And so I think as a team, this has a lot of responsibility in terms of your delivery of it. You have to be thinking "anything but little." You have to be thinking bigger than you're used to thinking because it is an aspirational statement. It also cues to some curiosity. "Anything but little. I want to go there. I want to see what is anything but little about Littleton." So it piques some interest as well. So this is a hard-working tagline for Littleton. Like I said, it's got some aspirational. It has some, it asks you to do something. So you have to work with this one a little bit. But I do think that these are the things that are happening in Littleton because anything but little is happening here.
Eventually, there'll be hundreds of examples. But for now, at this moment in time, I want to show you a couple of areas where it's been deployed already. The truck outside, and it's the fourth one that's been wrapped. So there are four vehicles and more to come. Our print ad campaign, which we just finished up this week. We actually shot this picture last week. And you might recognize Lisa. She was also in the video. She's our model and spokesperson for that. So this ad focuses on the shopping, not just downtown, but everywhere in Littleton. The second ad talks about entertainment value. The third is all about education. And that's an actual photo from Littleton, and same with Hudson Gardens. Future ads will talk about community housing and parks and trails and open space. So this is just the first of a few awareness ads that will be going out. You've all seen the Littleton Report by now, I'm sure. It's been mailed to all the homes. And that shows the new Masthead and the new logo incorporated. It's given a new life to the publication. Here's the monument sign that's proposed for the building. And other signage will go up throughout the city. It definitely has a very clean, strong appeal to it. Different pieces of collateral. Here's the letterhead and two different business cards. Does anyone have these yet? I think they're going out as they get used up. So don't throw out your business cards unless you need them right away. Some people want them sooner than others. But basically, as you run out of cards in the city, you'll be getting the new ones. And the police have their own. Name tags on the right, and then miscellaneous signage. It looks like an eviction notice, doesn't it? Danger, do not enter. So you're asking yourself, I'm sure, you know, "How can you help? How can this room and everybody involved or a part of this help this effort?"
Well, you can help by owning it, using it, and living it. So now that you have the brand book in front of you, you understand that we want to attract the right kind of businesses that adhere to our core values. These aren't core values that we are putting on you. These are core values that the research said, that the residents said, that tourists said, that non-residents, that people who come here want to see. So we need to own it. We need to be using it on our collateral. You need to be talking about it. You need to be pushing yourself to think "anything but little" too. So that's how we can really make... I always say, what we're doing here is we're getting unified. It's like if one person was beating a drum, it would sound a certain way. But if everybody in this room starts beating the same drum, it's powerful, and it will change the city. And that's why I think it's important that we really live it to a T. And there you go.
How do you determine whether to use a tagline or not use a tagline? What's the criteria? Because in some places, "anything but little" is there. Like on the truck, it wasn't. On some of our stationery, it's not. How do you determine whether you use a tagline or not?
I think it just, it all depends, really, Kelly.
It does depend. I mean, we had a conversation about whether to use it on vehicles. The brand book has a standard about how small you can go. So it's not going to be on something like a business card because it's too little. So we're just going to take it on a case-by-case basis. Where it makes sense to put the tagline in, we will.
But from a marketing standpoint, being consistent where it is always there, to me, is much more powerful than choosing when it's going to be there and when it's not going to be there.
Well, I think we're going to try to use it wherever it's practical. But I mean, there's going to be probably some circumstances where it's not practical. If it's on a vehicle that's moving and it's, you know, this tall, on a vehicle that's going by, you're probably not going to be able to read it. But on, like, you know, signs and, I don't know, places where it has an opportunity to be bigger, we just designed today a new banner to go over Main Street. And it's got the logo, the mark on the left, and "anything but little" goes across. So, I mean, that's a great opportunity to use it. We'll use it as much as we can.
And from a marketing perspective, we do try and want to use it as much as you can. But if it's going to be small or not reflect the way we want it, look the way we want it, then we don't. So.
Everybody is able to read the telephone directory, and it doesn't get much smaller than that. Or the housing-for-sale listing in the Denver Post. And I think that making a difference how small it is, being consistent, to me, is much more important.
Well, we agree, James. Wherever it can be used, it should be used.
We'd like to see it used everywhere, too. We like it.
I was going to ask generally the same question Jim asked. But I guess I'd, the other side of the coin on the truck moving past you is that the truck is running around the community. Part of the time it's moving, a lot of the time it's not. If it's, I think that's a dump truck sitting out there. It struck me that if you want, you know, having the tagline on the side of a door where people could see it and it's moving all around is an interesting way of getting it out and about in the community sooner than later.
If you want us to add it to the four trucks that got the logo, we can add it to those four. It's not a big deal. And, you know, that's just the first four of whichever trucks in the fleet are being circulated through. But I mean, if that's something you guys feel strongly about, we'll do it.
No, I just, I love the thing. But I will say, walking in, I was walking with Chris and Kathy and sort of did a double take when I didn't see the tagline just because I was expecting the tagline. I mean, your guys' call, your decisions on how to do it. But yeah, I thought that's what I wanted to share.
And I feel the same way about even business cards. You're going to hand those business cards out to hundreds and hundreds of people.
It is on the card.
The tagline is?
It's on the business cards.
Oh, I thought Kelly said it wasn't. Sorry.
Yeah. It is on the cards. Right now, they are.
Actually, that's something that Rachel and the print shop came up with. She was so excited about this. Just so you know, too, that the committee that we had that worked on it was more... I mean, Kathy and Chris and I principally were working with Philosophy. But we had a lot of committee meetings. We had a team of everybody in the city that does graphics or publishing or design. We had folks from the library, museum, print shop, economic development, Denise Stevens, Chris Garrett-Hurgen. But also, my peers at Littleton Public Schools and at South River, Teresa Cope, and I like to also run our committee and help us with the logo design. Because I thought it would be nice to have some of my fellow communications directors be on the committee with us. So anyway, Rachel designed those in a vertical. And that's, she really liked it that way and asked if it was okay. And I said, "Yeah, it's different."
It is. My one issue, at least for me, the way I use those cards. Sometimes I put them on my roll of books. So you're going to have to turn yourself 90 degrees as you're flipping through. That's...
It'll distract your attention when you're going through because...
No, I probably just ignore it. I mean, because I really wouldn't notice.
The one application where I think it's coming up short is on the badges, the name badges. And it's a white background, and the logo looks too small. It's really hard to tell what it is. It's...
I haven't even seen it on a name badge. Who has one?
I do.
You do?
Bottom right.
Uh-huh.
Oh, that way. Okay.
Through a temper tantrum, I got one.
It's easy. Make the red bigger.
Yeah, or I don't know if there's a different, maybe a different background treatment.
Do you not like it in white?
The white, I didn't like. I've been watching other cities do gold and silver. Tends to show a little better. The black, I don't think would work as well. But it, and it doesn't have to be that size either. Some of the cities can do different, you can do different sizes, too. I mean, not getting too crazy, but it just doesn't hold up well.
Well, it's certainly something that, you know, we're going to be modifying things as we go along because it would be hard for me to convey to you how many things have the city logo on it. I mean, you just can't even begin to think of all the things. So a lot of stuff is going to have to be done on a case-by-case basis. I mean, you're going to see it used on the gift at the board and commission dinner in a way that, gosh, who would have thought of that? I mean, it's just, some we're going to just have to continually work on. But it's a good point. Did Rachel do that for you? I'll just mention it to her if you want to tweak it a little bit before we produce some more.
Yeah. It just...
Maybe Chris could work with her.
Jim?
You know, we will have an excellent opportunity at the municipal league conference to look at name badges. They will come in gold and silver and black and green and red. And look at those and determine how you can read them. Because some of those, I have great difficulty distinguishing between the black letters there and the background color. So pay attention to that when we're at the conference and then make the decision about whether we want to change off of white or not.
Okay. Anything else?
I have another question. The print ads that you showed, where were they going to be?
I don't know, but they're so good. They're ready to roll. We purposely didn't make you printed copies of them because we're still tweaking a little bit of the copy. But these guys, I mean, they really came up with some amazing concepts for these ads. And as Randall mentioned, we have three more that we're going to do. I can give you a couple of examples at the bare minimum, but that's something that I think that we do need to talk about as far as economic development is concerned. Have you guys all seen that Littleton magazine that comes out a couple times a year? It's really beautifully photographed. It's mostly supported by realtors. It's a lot of advertising, but they did a neat spread in the last one on Ned Kelly's and a couple other places in downtown. They've offered us a free full-page ad in the next issue. And so when things like this come up, Chris and I are like, okay, what are we going to do? You know, let's come up with something. Well, now we have something to plug in. The Democratic National Convention is another example. The Denver Post offered us a free ad. And some of the material that was provided to all of the delegates to the DNC. Our membership in the South Metro Denver Chamber of Commerce in the South Metro Denver Quarterly that comes out, we're entitled to a half-page ad once a year. So those are all three opportunities. But, you know, it begs the question at some point in the future, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but as you move into this new area of economic development, is that something that you want to consider? I get called once a week by publications, you name it, everyone you can imagine says, hey, you've got a special, you want to advertise in the Denver Metro Convention and Visitors Bureau, Destination Planning Guide, or the Denver Business Journal, lots of places calling us to advertise. And my response is, we don't have an advertising budget. We don't do paid advertising. But maybe you want to reconsider that now that we're going a different route with economic development. Maybe you want to start out with a modest budget and take out 95280 with one of these. I don't know.
And the great thing about having a campaign already figured out is that it's ready to go on a moment's notice, so we don't have to figure it out when the request comes in. And with a campaign of six ads varying different core values of the city, if we get a request from something that's education-related, we can send that ad. Or if it's more retail, we send a shopping ad.
And you guys, about Lisa, you know, you just saw her in the video. So we're shooting her at her house, and she says, oh, I used to be a model, but then I had a child and I haven't really done it anymore. But if you guys ever have anything that comes up or you need a model, I'll do it for free. So look at her. This is what's cool, though, because she is real. She's a real Littleton resident mom shopping on Main Street in Littleton. So we love that she's not, you know, stock photo art, but out of an agent. It's all real stuff, so.
Thank you.
So I'm looking at those and then looking at what you gave us. So this is just a personal reaction. Having the swigly L above Littleton, to me, seems disembodied. What, no. So we're dealing with just one person. But I much prefer the L and then the Littleton and anything but little sort of embraced by that. It's like it's all light and airy and attractive as opposed to floating separate, even though it isn't really separate.
Sure. Well, we do have the logo both ways, and so you can use it horizontally or vertically.
Well, and I think it brings us to what Jim was saying. Having something constant, so you recognize it. So if there's a way to have that consistency, I think you get more bang for the buck than you.
Sure. We also agree. But some applications won't allow for the horizontal logo to work well. So we have to offer it in a vertical format also. And so we felt that this was the best way to lock it up. And we did look at lots of different ways to size it and marry it with the word Littleton. But this is the best way to put those two together in a vertical lockup. And so if there's more affinity towards the horizontal lockup where the two are sort of nested in a little bit better, by all means, you should use that one more often. And you have that choice now.
Great. Cool. Wonderful. Two things. One is, if we run that one in the middle, we co-op what was South Suburban, 50/50. Right?
Paid for?
Yeah.
For the time being, it's only going to be placed in three places. But can I tell you something else exciting? Sunday night, we're going to videotape the Firefall concert, just us as a staff. We got permission from Firefall. And we're also going to shoot still photos of the Firefall concert on Sunday night as well. And so we're going to have this video of Firefall that we can play on our YouTube channel, too, which is pretty cool, so.
Now, my only other comment is before there's any, any, just, you know, anything goes further in terms of paid advertising, I would recommend that we do a pretty thorough media analysis. You don't see a lot of cities marketing themselves, and there's probably a reason for that. And I think that there are places where it's appropriate, but I think it has to be studied pretty deeply because it is, it's not inexpensive to do that, and we are, you know, we're not using private money. So I would first plan on doing some sort of pretty intense media analysis of anything we would even, but beyond the free that you've got. But, great. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for the CAFER. Please come back for the CAFER.
Great, thank you. And with that, we also have the conclusion of our fiscal year audit report. And we wanted to have our partner in charge from Ruben Brown present the audit report tonight. And so we have Cheryl Wallace, who's the partner. And she can present the report findings and answer any questions counsel may have.
Good evening.
Hello. Hi there. At this time, you're presenting from a chair.
I know. I've not been in a study before. I'm going, thank you, Doug. I'm going to go through our viewpoints, which has our required communication. It would be this document that you have. In the interest of time, I understand we're running a little bit behind, I'm going to go through the viewpoints. And just stop me if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll just go ahead and keep going. Our viewpoints, if you go to page two.
Page one.
Page two.
Page one.
Okay.
Yes. In here, the second to the last line of the first paragraph, Cheryl, it talks about, and the significant estimates made by the city's management. Can you just maybe elaborate a little bit on what those significant estimates are?
Sure. And we talk about it later on. We're to let you know when there's estimates in your financial statements. And because you have capital assets, you have an estimate of depreciation because there's useful lives. In other words, you have buildings, you estimate whether they're going to last 30 years, 40 years. So you're charging to the income statement a charge for depreciation of that building, and that is viewed as an estimate. Because the lives are an estimate.
So when you're saying that here, it's primarily dealing with the capital depreciation schedule?
Yes, it is. Page two now? Okay. So we're going to start with our required communication. Every audit firm is supposed to report to a governing body, and you're supposed to have communication on certain events and circumstances and how the audit, how the audit and how the process went. So that's what we're going to go through. It's set up in a grid, so on the left side is going to be the responsibilities and the required communication. On the right side is our response. We're to let you know that we follow generally accepted auditing standards on the right side. And the one thing that you care about the most is we issued an unmodified opinion, which is an unqualified opinion. It's now called unmodified because there's a new standard out there. It's called the clarified standard, and it was supposed to clarify our opinion, which is why our opinion looks different. I'm not so sure it clarified everything, but an unqualified is an unmodified now. So. At the end of the day, you had a clean, it's a clean opinion. That's the best opinion you can get. So that's a good thing. On page three, other information that's contained in the CAFER, this is part of that clarified standards. We now have the opinion separated out into what our opinion covers, and it's supposed to clarify. You've got management discussion and analysis information that's prepared by management and budget information within the document that's outside the basic financial statements. You've got combining financial statements, other budget information, and the local highway finance report that's covered by the basic financials that we give in relation to opinion. What that really means is we make sure that it says and matches what we audited. So we know there's consistency in there. And then you have the introductory and statistical section, which we do not give an opinion on.
Question that could be answered by Doug and Tiffany later is the capital depreciation that's. that's being reported on our income statement. How does that relate to, is there now a reserve that is being set up for capital depreciation?
A reserve?
An asset that can then be deployed to refresh or refurbish or repurchase whatever capital has been depreciated?
Well, as you know.
The replacement.
Yeah, we do have a replacement schedule, which is in the budget book. We look out five years and have a capital project replacement fund established by the city. So, and right now, it's mainly funded by the building use tax. We also have highway users' tax that go to fund streets. And then we have the city's general fund, and any excess revenues are normally transferred in the capital projects fund. But we have a replacement schedule that's basically, you know, we can look at the depreciation, we can see how old the assets are getting, and the infrastructure is getting older. And there is a correlation there between that and the replacement schedule. But I think we've kind of talked about that during budget discussions. We're probably behind a little bit on the schedule as far as replacing some of those assets in the infrastructure, because they are aging. And so that's something that we need to try to define a little bit better as far as what the replacement costs are going to be.
Right. And that was my comment, is to make sure that we kind of test it for its realism and what really can occur. I mean, it's easy to put up an accounting schedule. It's another thing to actually get to the point where we have to replace a roof or something like that.
And we're at the, to an extent, to drill down a little bit, we're at the place where we've got a software package, and we're now entering all the assets. We've got essentially an asset management program that we've, it's not important, but we're at the place where.
Bigfoot, I think.
Yeah, that's right. Where staff is starting to, no comments on the name. Where we're getting that entered. So we're a ways off, I think, from getting real and updated information around what those capital replacements are beyond what historically has been used from just staff's experience. But that's what we're intending to get as far as we can, prepping in for the 2014 budget.
Page four. We're to let you know that we planned and scoped and did the timing of the audit, and that was in a letter and held a meeting October 29, 2012, to discuss the nature and the timing and the extent of the audit procedures. We're to let you know about the accounting practices. In the CAFRA, there's note one that discusses your accounting policies that you follow. There were no significant accounting policies that were adopted. We're also to let you know if there were any significant transactions entered into that lacked authoritative guidance, there were none. And there were no significant transactions that were recognized in a different period than when the transaction occurred. We're to let you know about management's judgments and the accounting estimates. Depreciation is one of those estimates, we've already talked about that. And then you do have an allowance for doubtful accounts related to your emergency medical services. So that is an estimate, because you're estimating the net revenue that you're going to retain from that service. I'm on page five. For financial statements disclosures, we're to let you know if the disclosures are complex, and you have pretty neutral, non-complex disclosures. You do have debt disclosures that are in note six, in the capital lease in note five. You don't have any complex disclosures, you're not into derivatives. We're to let you know if we had any difficulties encountered during the audit, we had none. I would tell you, we've been the auditors for five years. In five years, the management team has always been prepared. We come out twice a year. We ask for a lot. Everything's always been timely, our response has been timely, and staff have been easy to work with. And that's been all five years. So I could tell you, we've had no difficulties encountered during the audit.
And I will just report to council, I had a conversation with Bert Bondi, and he said exactly the same thing, how easy it is to work with this staff.
Thank you. Exactly the same thing?
Very close, Cheryl, very close.
It's an auditor talking.
On page six, on the left side's corrected and uncorrected misstatements. That is kind of standard language. What it really means were their adjustments to the trial balance. There was one adjustment to the trial balance, and to get back to my earlier comment, we ask for trial balances ahead of when we get the CAFRA, because we like to see when we were out here at interim, if something's changed. So the city was still clarifying the transaction for the museum. So it was an adjustment, but it was only adjustment because of the timing of when we asked for the trial balance and then finalizing. So I just want to be clear there. We're to let you know if we had any disagreements with management, we had none. We did ask management to sign a representation letter, and that is attached. It's three pages. We basically, pretty much asked, did you tell us anything that would impact the financials? Yes.
Question on that, the management rep letters signed by Doug and Tiffany. And I guess I'm wondering why you weren't interested or didn't get Michael to sign it as well?
You're not required to have Michael sign it, because he's not the one producing the financial information. So.
He's responsible for it.
But he's responsible for it. But we typically have the finance directors typically the one that's asked to sign it. However, we are required to show the representation to governing bodies and to the city manager to make sure that all representations they're aware of.
Okay.
We're to let you know if we had any consultations with any other independent accountants, we had none. We're to let you know if we had any other audit findings or issues, and we had no matters. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through a little quickly. We did include some financial analysis. One of the things we look at is just budget to actual information, and the general fund is typically the one fund where all the activity comes from. Real quickly, the budget process, looking at it, the, it has exceeded the expected income for the past two years. That's just to give you a big picture of where the budget and actual comes out. On the next page, for the expenditures, you can see the expenditures are the same way. The budget was a little hot, in essence, conservative. The budget was a little higher than the actual expenditures. So at the end of the day, the city's budget process seems to be a very conservative process for the city to follow, which is a good thing. On page nine, this is a snapshot of your revenue type. It kind of tells you probably what you already know. The revenues over the past five years have stayed pretty consistent, taxes being the majority of it. On page 10, it's a snapshot of building permits and how they've tracked over the past five On page 11, one of the things, because we were your auditors in the past, we'd like to report back to you any comments that are suggestions, our areas of observations we've had in the past. We've always worked with the city, and the city has always been very diligent about talking to us about our observations and understanding the benefits from some of those observations. And the city's always worked very hard in implementing comments and suggestions that it felt were warranted. These basically are reporting back to you, the implementation that the management team did on prior year's recommendations. So you do have a person independently now reviewing the bank reconciliations, and adjusting journal entries are always posted timely. And then, of course, the responsiveness and accessibility. If you go to page.
Before you get off that page, I just wanted to publicly say thanks to Doug and Tiffany and the staff, because we understand how much, you guys are held to a very high standard. There's an awful lot of activity that goes on, a lot of transactional work. Internal controls have to be strong. It takes a lot of effort to get it all right. And I've always said, you guys are like umpires, you only get noticed if somebody misses a call. So this, you should get the public recognition, which comes along with something like this, which basically says, you guys are really doing a good job, and it's greatly appreciated and highly valued. So thank you.
I'm going to go to page 13 now. These are some of our observations and suggestions and comments for next year. In looking at some, we're here throughout the year, we're here at interim, and then we come back in at field work, and we actually go through the processes for the city. So one of the things we noticed was that there was an individual that had the ability to generate checks from the accounting system and also had signature authority. It's not really used, but when we were looking at matrix and you're looking at segregation of duties, that did pop up. So it's just something that the city might want to look at. On the capital assets, we recommend some physical asset observations be performed annually. There is a listing that is sent out, but we're asking for the observations to just be performed.
We talking equipment and movable stuff here? Do you guys have asset tags on a lot of the stuff? Is that the deal?
No, we don't have it tagged. We do ask the departments to perform their own inventory, but I think what Cheryl is alluding to, the finance should oversee that and actually go out and do physical accounts, which I agree with, you know, annually, we can at least go out there.
Or at least spot count.
Spot count.
Spot count, verify, at least some of the larger piece of equipment.
Okay.
And we've implemented a brand-new, formalized disposal process that they had suggested the previous year, so now that's in place, too. So we have a lot more oversight on the disposal, because some items are auctioned off and so forth through fleet. So we have more oversight there, but I think we're going to implement that one for sure and do some physical counts.
Okay. And you guys have the bandwidth to do the spots, you know, spot check it periodically here and there? I mean, you've got enough staff to incorporate that? Because that's a time-consuming process.
It's time-consuming, and it's difficult even for us to do what we do, because the capital asset maintenance is very time-consuming, even though we just do it once a year.
Right.
I think, you know, we even try to keep up with things a little bit on a more frequent nature, quarterly. But the annual process is time-consuming, and we don't have a large staff to do it, but we're going to have to find the time.
Okay.
One of the things we've recommended, because that's come up in several instances, with people doing more with less resources.
Say that again.
People doing more with less resources.
Right.
One of the things is just to get a schedule of the counts and just randomly go out to one or two.
Right.
And then you can rotate every year where you've gone. And that provides the monitoring and oversight.
What would be the dollar value that you would think that above that dollar value you want, you would like to see that inventory?
I would say on the significant counts. Here's my other side to that. Sometimes it's not necessarily the dollar value, but I do think that the finance department knows some of the departments that might have some challenges and opportunities on their accounts, and that might be where I go and look to, where you think that maybe these controls might need to be better. So I wouldn't necessarily set it just on dollar amount. I would honestly look at some of the departments where I think finance staff might have some questions of themselves. So I would not set a dollar amount. I would actually set it based upon where you think the risk is.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a very good idea, and I think we will do that. We will assess the risk areas before we go out and do that count.
What would be some of those elements of risk?
Okay, so in the past five years, there has been something that's popped up in one of the departments where somebody different was doing the count, and all of a sudden there was land. So that would be a risk to me. Does that help?
Aggie.
I have a question back on bullet one.
Yes.
About the signatories. Has that happened in the past? Have you done something different that now this is happening? I mean, I don't remember that big.
Nothing changed, it just came to our attention. Because we rotate certain areas that we look at, and we actually look at things sometimes, every year we rotate what we look at.
Okay.
And we go into a different area in more depth, and this is one we went into.
And this one is actually the finance director, that's my position. So we actually have two main people that generate checks for vendors, and I'm like the third backup, but because I am a signatory, Michael and I have our signatures on each check that go out. That's why this comment is in here, because I have the ability to generate checks, and also I'm a signer on the account. Even though, in practicality, I never generate checks, because the other two people are in the office, and we just don't allow them to either take vacation, or we don't issue checks until they're back in the office.
Have you been with, with a wet noodle on?
And plus, I don't even know how to generate the checks now, anyway. So they won't let me have that secret key.
I wasn't going to say that.
Yeah, I think, just to add a little bit to that, another control that we have is we have what we call positive pay with our bank now, and that is where any check that we issue, we have to send a file to the bank, and the bank matches it when that check is actually cashed. And so there's another person who does that part of the process as well. So even if Doug did upload, or print a check, someone else would have to approve it in the system to get it uploaded into the bank.
So that's like another mitigating control, but.
Yep.
So I'm not sure that this is really going to change, in other words. I think most of the comments, you know, we'll definitely evaluate, and most of the time, we will make the appropriate change.
Yep.
That the auditor is recommending this one, I'm not sure that we will make.
Well, there's other checkpoints, as you just mentioned.
There's other checkpoints.
Yes, right. But I think you, as a backup, how many folks can print?
Two. Well, plus Doug, three.
We don't really count Doug. But as a backup, though, I mean, people on vacation, that one person who's there is sick.
I would be a total emergency, you know, especially if we had a paycheck that needed to go out to an individual, that would be an extreme emergency. And then if I had to generate one, then I could. Yeah.
As long as the checkpoints are there, it's okay.
People need to get paid.
Yep.
Before you turn the page.
It's just worth commenting that the finance accounting system is real-time, so the moment that money is deducted, it begins to show up in the system. So it's not as if the books aren't looked at until the end of the week or the end of the month. It's a constant, it's a constant observation. And that's a tremendous security valuable tool in the city to make sure that the money is going in the right direction.
Yes, we do have lots of controls in place, and if a check was generated, it would have to be posted in a general ledger system, plus at the bank, like Tiffany has stated, so.
You're saying there's a triple entry.
We have many controls in place.
And Cheryl, just wanted to comment on a deficiency in your viewpoints. Going back to, this I figured was the great place to do that, going back to page four and five in your viewpoints, you referenced the notes using Arabic numerals, and in fact, the CAFRA uses Roman numerals.
Okay.
Jerry, next.
That was just for you.
It's a tough crowd.
He's in charge of Phil tonight, he's not.
No, no. This is, can I sit somewhere else?
Is it the right font? Can I ask?
No.
Mm-mm. You guys are, you're talking about disbursements. I guess one of the questions, and I didn't see it in here, and that's okay, there's not really an issue, and it's not, it's more from a standpoint, if you guys get a lot of checks that come in as well as revenue, the various permit fees and so forth and so on, you handle a fair amount of paper. And I guess the question, one of the things we've looked at periodically is the idea of putting a scanner in to where you can run the check through the scanner and get electronic funds available immediately, or more to the point, get the deposit into the bank as opposed to having to hang on and actually physically deal with the paper. Is that something you guys consider?
We've been doing that for about four years now. Yes.
See, I knew you were.
We told you, don't ask.
Excellent.
Timely question.
I should have known you were ahead of the curve.
Jared.
I have a question on checks that were maybe stolen or somewhere. Do we ever have that issue whatsoever?
So in the past five years, we've actually run the check register, and we've actually looked at missing and voided checks. And every time we investigated, it was a canceled or avoided check. So we've actually looked at that in two separate years.
And then also, when there's reimbursements to folks, because that's, do, have we looked at doing, or maybe we are, maybe this is a Bruce question, but are we using like a deposit to like a credit card or something instead of a physical check? Like, for instance, I give you a check that belongs to Doug, he gets a reimbursement, so that card is now credited, say a hundred dollars or whatever it is.
There's reimbursement expenses. Is that what you mean, reimbursement expenses?
No, I think you mean like if we have a debit card or something.
Instead of giving, instead of giving individual checks, you just credit to a particular account, which is, say, a card, that they can do whatever. a few more off, the, is it cost savings at all?
To be honest with you, we don't have a huge amount of employee reimbursements. A lot of times we will have petty cash reimbursements, where we will just give out cash for under a hundred dollars for mileage reimbursement or parking or something like that, but if it's like a travel reimbursement, we'll just issue a check, and I don't know how many we do each, each week. It's probably only a handful.
So, and I know we do direct deposit, of course, for paychecks.
For payroll.
But are there, there are some folks that still get the, the old-school checks?
Yeah, and I think since the city started using the P-card, a lot of employees use the P-card now for their charges, so there's nothing to reimburse them for, they're not all the time, they're not paying out of their pocket.
I, I jump right to payroll, though. So on payroll, where you do the direct deposits?
Yes.
So then on the folks that don't have that, so you do a hard check?
I would say about 99% of our employees are on direct deposit.
Okay. The last two comments, we do go out, and because you have different locations, we like to go out and do site visits, and we visit some of the locations outside of finance to understand controls and how processes are working. We did go to the police location, and currently, again, this is just a best practice, you do have one person that's handling the receipt process, and so the thought process is you might want to actually have another person injected into that monitoring or oversight. It's a segregation of duties comment. How much money is going through there in relation to how much goes through the city as a whole? Not a lot, but we went out and did some site visits, and this came to our attention. So we like to report it back to you. In the museum location, there, there are multiple people handling the cash process, and sometimes with multiple people handling the cash process, that could lend itself to some opportunity. Same comment for the police. If you want to know how much is really going through there for the city as a whole, it's not a lot of dollars. But we did go out there and make sure we understood the process, and that came to our attention. So what these two things are, segregation of duties, but there's a cost-benefit analysis to be made with these comments.
Courthouse also?
You know, we did not go to the courthouse. We have gone to the courthouse in last year, yeah.
Last year.
Yeah.
And all of those things are based.
Thank you.
Maggie had a question?
Yeah, well, observation, it seems to me that in the last few years, we've had different places sort of discovering, discovering in different places somewhat similar things. So it would seem to me maybe a little directive, whatever, that would get everybody on the same page of doing this, maybe by singling out past issues, that this is just not a theoretical problem, but it's been happening. So then that made me think, at least with one of the previous issues, somebody would count the money the end of the day and the next morning both, and I think you all said it'd be better to have different people do that.
That's correct.
Remember that comment?
You know, so I'm, it seems to me maybe a little training or something or other might help.
You're right, and, and that might be a, a similar control that we want to implement in the police department as well, but we will definitely, the finance department always follows up, we will go out to the department, find out what their current process is, try to implement some new controls, and then we will officially follow up, and we'll send recommendations to Michael on all of these comments that were made by the auditor, and what our analysis is and what we're going to do to correct it, if that's necessary.
Cheryl, my annual question is, what's the effort that other folks and the costs that they've gone through in posting all disbursements online available to all citizens?
The cost?
Well, the cost, the difficulty, and do we have a big hurdle to that at this point in time?
You want to, you've looked at that, right? So...
Yeah, well, this has come up in the past, and I think we've surveyed a couple other cities. I know Lakewood does it, I know the school districts do it now, and I, you know, there's definitely a cost with implementing it, and then there's also a cost with maintaining it. And what we've decided is that the city charter already requires us to publish the checks of $500 or more on a monthly basis, so we do that. So I'm not sure what more we need to do from that aspect, and I, I never get a question about those checks. And all those checks are on the website, and we still publish them in the newspaper. So I don't know that there, there'd be a cost that would...
So a proper response to citizens might be until we start getting some questions on the 500 or more.
Yeah, and do they want their valuable resources spent on this? So that would be my question.
Go ahead.
We, the next few pages are just all the new governmental standards that everybody gets to manage. Our industry's been very busy. I would tell you the one that you care about the most is on page 15. And without getting too much into the detail, how pensions are reported is going to impact everybody, and that is changing. So your pension information is going to change, and for some entities, it's going to change it a lot. It's going from a funded basis, so in essence, if your actuary said you had to fund $200 and you funded 100, then you showed a liability of $100. It didn't look at the plan's assets and the plan's liabilities to see if the plan was unfunded, and now the literature, starting in 2014, is going to have you recognize if that plan is unfunded, and that liability will need to be recorded.
But there's, there's usually an actuarial report that will tell you your, your funding basis that determines that contribution, whether it's plus or minus, it's just how the liability shows up. So is this going to show up in the balance statement?
Yes, and, and it will, correct me if I'm wrong, it will affect the firefighters
because they're an FPPA. It will not impact the general government or police because they're defined contribution plans. So you will see a liability likely on the financial statements related.
Yeah, and that's just something we like to tell you, it's coming so you can plan for it.
Do we, well, I was going to say, do we know what the rough item is?
Because right now, the way that it reads for the accounting literature, you can't just simply take the actuarial report and look at the unfunded, there's adjustments to it based upon discount rates and other items.
Not trusting the actuaries?
Luckily, FPPA will be doing that for us.
FPPA is still going to, they're still in the process of coming up with those calculations.
Bruce and I were looking at your Gatsby 65 on page 14.
Oh, yes.
Give us a couple examples of what the, of what you're discussing there, what, what would be reclassed, or what would be an example of what's going to get reclassed?
Got it. If you do derivatives, that's going to be what we call soft asset, and it's going to show as deferred inflows or outflows as the difference. If you do concession service arrangements, that would count. The one thing that I could see the city doing, because I don't believe you're, in the past five years, you've not had those type of transactions, so I don't see you entering into those transactions. However, the one transaction that's going to impact all governmental entities is refundings. So when you refund a bond, a COP, there's that differential between what you were going to pay out and then your savings.
You mean refinancing?
Refinancing, it's called, yeah, it's refunding is the literature.
Right.
So you've got a deferred gain or loss that you get, that's not hitting the income statement immediately, it's put on the balance sheet, that's going to be put in the deferred inflows and outflows now.
So they're just changing categorization?
It's a matter of geography on the balance sheet.
Okay.
If you, if you ask me, just plain and simple, it's a matter of geography.
Okay, thank you.
On the FPPA, will they have some information by the time we have our budget discussions?
I don't think so, I really don't. I, I can, I can double-check with them and see when they're anticipating to have that information.
Cool.
But I just want to make a final note. I am, we are very fortunate, we have Tiffany and Erlene, who's our chief accountant, they have auditing experience, and they make sure they're, that the city is, the work papers have not been reviewed just once, but been reviewed twice before the auditors are onsite, and so we do have everything organized and ready for their audit, and I think that really does help them out when they're here, makes their job a lot better, and that may, means they can be more efficient in looking at the risk areas that they need to be looking at. So I think the city is fortunate to have that, the personnel that we do to be able to help them. One, one other final note, too, I wanted to follow up. As you can see in the CAFRA, we did transfer, the city transferred $2,553,870 from the general fund to the capital projects fund, and during budget discussions, we had talked about the 1.6 million, we wanted to do that ahead of time, so we, we did the budget amendment, and council approved that budget amendment in November, but the actual transfer for the year was the two and a half million. We transferred as much as we had budget authority to transfer in 2012, so there will be another 450,000 that we'll ask council to approve in 2013 that's remaining from the 2012 savings, the excess revenues. So that will be coming forward to council this year.
And...
I, I just want to open the discussion again on the unfunded liabilities of the fire, new hire now, I guess.
All.
It's all fire pension. The city has worked really hard over the years to eliminate all unfunded liabilities, and they did it because personnel is the big piece with, with sick leave, vacation, buildups like that, any kind of, any kind of thing like that, to include, it's at one point, changing police to defined contribution rather than defined benefit, and you've worked really hard on general employees not to create any kind of circumstance. I, I mean, because I was part of it and I watched it, it was not easy. Is this going to be a new challenge on paper to eliminate the unfunded liabilities that are going to be presented by those pensions? Because I think there will be. I think, I think that, I would be surprised if it didn't show that way.
There, there may be. We haven't seen any type of preliminary information from FPPA. I haven't, I haven't heard that there's a big unfunded liability. I, I know that, well, have you seen anything, Cheryl, on that?
No.
I don't think anybody's seen it.
Nobody has.
So it's hard, it's hard to make that judgment right now?
It's one to really watch, Doug, and maybe CML or, you know, this is a big, this is a big deal.
Okay.
And, and not speaking out of school, I think there's been questions about FPPA's statement of what they felt their future gains would be based on some percentage of investment, and that it's, it was not one that was feasible. So I think some question is going to be, you know, the question is, was that a reasonable estimate? And I think in the past, quite honestly, it's been a little bit inflated or optimistic.
Well, I, I think everybody that has a pension plan right now is struggling with the investment earnings going down and the longevity of the participants going up.
Right.
And that's a hard thing to manage for everybody. And I, I think there's only one entity that I'm aware of that I see that actually has an asset. All the other entities do have an obligation from, from the information that we see. So I think everybody's struggling with that.
Well, I think, you know, we really got to watch that one, because it could sneak up and surprise us.
Yep. That was a much better explanation than the actuarial one. And then, just before we finish on this, certainly the advisory comments, again, appear to be rather minor in the context taken together with the ones that I've had a chance to see over the last three years. They've all been relatively minor, and we've, I know that the staff has worked to address them all. I, I do like the one particularly around the physical. It's always nice to go out and kick the tires kind of thing, so appreciate that.
Anybody else?
Um, yes.
I have a question, but I think this is maybe for Wendy. I, I noticed when, at, at the report that you gave us, the monthly report, where it has totals for previous years, some of those numbers don't always match what the audit is showing.
Numbers for previous years, in what portion of the...
Well...
Sales tax?
Well, whether it's attendance or whatever, I just wondered, is, are you pulling your numbers from the audit on previous years, or?
For what specifically?
Well, for one, I was looking at the VMS library, for instance, on some of those numbers where the numbers aren't the same. Are you using the numbers?
I don't, I don't, I just gather them.
From?
So each department, the department heads give me information, and I just put it all together and send it out to you.
So they don't necessarily pull the, then for Michael, then they don't necessarily use the audit for previous years?
It's unedited information, the monthly reports is un-audited.
Yeah.
And it's going to vary probably depending on what day it maybe ran, or...
But I think for accuracy, though, if you're going to report on 2010, 2011, 2012, why would you not take the accurate numbers? They're available.
I can catch you, Jerry, and you can give me some specific examples, and we can see if there's just...
Yeah, and I noticed it last night, I was looking at this, and it's...
Yeah, a lot of it's timing, because we're not, you know, right now, we're just finished the audit. The audit's not going to be done until May, so we're not going to have the final numbers till May. Now, I do know whatever is going in the budget book is going to match the CAFRA, because those are audited numbers, so when you look at the revenues, for example...
Then you true them up at that point?
Then we true them up, yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, I would like to say one thing. That does conclude my report. I want to say thank you for letting us be your auditors for the past five years. We've enjoyed being your auditors, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in five years.
Yep. Appreciate all your work, thank you.
Much.
Okay, our next is ballot discussion continued. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. So there are now two, four, or five things this evening under the ballot discussion, and just to remind everyone what we're talking about are those things that you might want to put on the ballot for 2013, and so we'll just walk through these. A couple of them I think will be pretty quick, and we're going to start with Doug and lodging tax, which is why he hasn't moved. So the question had been, I think, came from Councilmember Taylor, is what kind of revenue would we receive based on comparative lodging taxes around other communities? And so everything we're going to talk about tonight, except possibly the fee component that Councilman Taylor asked about on the ticket, would be required to go to the vote, to the vote of the people, just again to be clear. Doug, it's all yours.
Okay, great. And council has, and maybe not this identical council, but council as a whole has reviewed a lodging tax proposal over the past five years, a couple of different occasions, and the lodging tax that has been proposed in the past, the 3% tax on lodging stays for less than 30 days, it would be implemented similar to the sales tax, which is already applicable for that lod, the lodging stay right now, so that's 3% that the city does receive currently. So the proposal would be another 3% on top of that. Council can decide on 3% or any, any other percentage that they so choose if they want to move forward to a ballot. Just in looking, a lot of different municipalities, counties, cities, they do implement a lodging tax with a lot of different rates, and we did a comparison on Highlands Ranch, Arapahoe County, Jefferson County. Highlands Ranch has a 5% sales tax, Arapahoe County, 4.25% sales tax, Jefferson County, 4.5%, all of those do not have a lodging tax. And then you can see on the attachment for the incorporated areas, Littleton has a 7.25% sales tax, Inglewood, 7.75% plus a lodging tax of 2%, so that's a total of 9.75% on hotel stays, and then Greenwood Village total is a 10.25%, which includes a 3% lodging tax. We also wanted to talk to our main, the large hotel, the Hampton Inn, which this would mainly affect, which could possibly affect their business, and I did get the chance to talk to their general manager, and I guess 70 to 75% of their business is corporate stays. And the manager said that right now corporations are really looking at their bottom line, so when they do shop for hotels, they actually are including the lodging tax, sales tax as part of their comparison, so that would definitely be a factor if their rates were increased due to lodging tax. One also point, one other point I wanted to make, I know Councilmember Cole had talked to... And I guess 70 to 75% of their business is corporate stays. And the manager said that right now corporations are really looking at their bottom line. So when they do shop for hotels, they actually are including the lodging tax, sales tax as part of their comparison. So that would definitely be a factor if their rates were increased due to lodging tax. One also point, one other point I wanted to make, I know Councilmember Cole had talked about possibly setting up exemptions for nonprofits and for governmental agencies and possibly school districts. And that's already established in the Colorado statutes. So if the council wanted to move forward, they could definitely clone that and make sure those same exemptions are in place for the lodging tax as what the Colorado statute has implemented. So that, that could be something that would be part of the ballot resolution ordinance that would take effect for this lodging tax. So are there?
Your nonprofit status doesn't include city tax? I mean, if you're nonprofit and you're not paying ta, you're exempt from taxes, right?
Right.
So why would you pay city tax?
Well, they wouldn't. They would be exempt from sales tax and exempt from lodging tax.
But we don't.
I'm saying the lodging tax could be similar to that. If there's, basically if there's sales tax exempt, they could be exempt from the lodging tax as well.
And we have to say so? I mean, I'm missing something here. What?
Well, I think that would be part, part of whatever code is established or the, the ordinance that's established. And I don't know, would that have to be, since it's part of the statute, I'm not sure if that would have to be specifically.
I'd have to look at it, but I would assume we would go ahead and just incorporate that language in like we do in our, with our sales tax.
It sounds like we might want to be more explicit about it after reading some of the information I've read because there's some gray area in the statute. But I'd leave that up to the attorney to, to review that. But that would be definitely something that would be easily implemented because it's already in the statute, so. That was all I needed or wanted to say about the lodging tax, but.
Jim?
Well, I understand what you said about the manager of the Hampton Inn. However, isn't it a cost of doing business for them to pay, for whatever they pay for their, their executives or their people who are coming to rent those rooms, it's a cost of doing business, so it's deductible anyway regardless of whether it's a tax or just a room charge?
It is deductible.
So, so what's, I don't see the difference in, in that. It should not make any difference whether they have a, a tax on the cost of the room or not.
It's not a dollar for dollar, though.
It, deductible it is.
Not as an expense, it's not going to be dollar for dollar?
Reduction from income tax, but it's not like.
From corporate income?
It's a reduction in the tax amount, but it's not, I mean, it's the same thing as if you made a charitable deduction yourself, you're not getting a dollar for dollar.
But it is still deductible, part of it, a piece of it.
And part of what we had discussed at the staff level is, is what are their options in this particular area in terms of going other locations? The closest is really over on south of C470 Broadway. And then there's some others as you go west and obviously if you go north. And so question becomes, are they, are they looking for location specific where this really has an option for them or opportunity for them to say, oh, we're not going to go because there's a 3% differential? Or are they really looking for this location because they're tied in with South Park and they want to be right there? I mean, we don't know for sure, but, and they, from what Doug described is they weren't opposed to it, they just wanted you guys to know that that was a concern that they had. And of course, this is a vote of the, of the people of Littleton, and so it's an easy tax to add on because it's guests and visitors coming to the, to the location if that's what you so choose.
So what about the difference in room rates from, at different locations? Because it would seem to me some of the, the ones that maybe don't charge the tax have higher cost rooms.
Well, you're right. And they would have to establish those different price points on their room rates, and that would be, that would be one of their factors, but they would definitely.
Well, I know that.
Have that flexibility to adjust the room rate.
Did you all though look at, compare that at all?
We did not survey room rates. Did not survey.
And those change all the time. I mean, this is really a decision, I mean, the core decision for you is, do you want to ask the voters, do you want, whether or not they want it?
No, I just was curious.
Because there's so many other variables that'll be out there. We just wanted to let you know that we contacted the manager, reached out to them.
Because there, yeah, there are other variables, what type of amenities hotels offer, those type of things.
Yeah. And I, I'm not sure that what you said, I asked about, was what I asked about. So my concern in part was when it's awfully, awfully cold and there are homeless people and then they are, somebody is providing, some organizations providing the, the pay, the money to, for them to get out of, you know, 20 degree below zero cold or whatever, that they not be, have to pay a tax to do that. That was, I think that's what I was saying. So as opposed, you mentioned a whole bunch of other things that, or groups or whatever that, and I don't know who pays, where that money comes from, but that was part of what my focus was.
Right. So if it's a nonprofit activity.
Yeah.
And they're staying at the hotel, they, they would be exempt from that tax.
So we, tonight I would like to either move these things to the ballot or get them off our table at this point. So in terms of the lodging tax, do you, Doug, have a recommended amount or you've kind of, is there?
Well, I think.
A percentage?
Yeah.
I mean, would that be something that, I would imagine that would have to be in the ballot language, what the percentage tax would be. Okay, do you have a recommendation?
Well, we, I guess SAV would recommend 3%. And you can see for each percent, that would generate roughly about $30,000 more to the city.
Okay. So council, would you, are you?
Can I ask a question?
30,000, it says 90,000.
How did, how did you?
30 each.
30 each for each percent.
How did you estimate that calculation or calculate that estimate?
We took the group of hotels that we are now collecting sales tax on. And so it was pretty easy because it would be the same base that you would calculate a lodging tax that we're now currently collecting sales tax.
But the sales tax might be for food and stuff rather than the room. I mean, if people go to the Hampton, they buy something to eat or whatever. So it wouldn't be just a tax based on the room.
Tax on that.
They don't have food at the Hampton.
They don't have. But isn't that taxed anyway?
They don't have a kitchen.
Is it?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, they don't have like room service or anything like that.
I mean, everything is free with the room?
Uh-huh. And then what isn't, they pay for.
It's probably incident.
There's a couple vending machines and stuff.
Mine.
Yeah, it's not like a, you know, big fancy hotel.
No, 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 I knew that part. I just thought there were some things.
It is, I know.
Buy wise. Okay.
And just like everything else can be driven by the economy, so, yeah, revenues will go up and down, it's very elastic, but that's the current estimate.
Okay. Phil?
I just wanted to say that I understand it's about 90,000 of, of revenue, but right now, they're paying property taxes. We do have the sales tax as they might remodel. There's a use tax. There's also business personal property tax that goes along. And at least as I look at the, the competitive environment, the Arapahoe County one doesn't matter as much as the Douglas County and the Jefferson County as far as where our primary location being the Hampton Inn that we're, we're taking a look at. And I don't think we've kind of hit the, the right time to, to put this out there to, to voters unless it would be to provide for an authorization to be implemented at a time of later choosing.
Okay. So do you guys want to go around and give your reasoning? Jim?
Well, I, I disagree with what Phil said. I think it's the appropriate time to do it, to move forward and give the voters of the city a, a choice as to whether they want to have a sales tax on room rentals. And I think the 3% is a logical amount to do. And I would like to see the ballot issue or the ballot language come before us to move it forward to the November ballot.
Okay, we will do, we are in a special meeting, so we will do a roll call on this roll call vote. Do, does anybody else want to say anything or do you want to just go ahead and do a vote?
Look, I'll, I'll comment. It may reduce the lodging by some companies for a, I think only for short term. I think eventually it's going to pick back up anyway. But if we don't do it now, when? I mean, we, we, five years from now, we wish we had done it.
Okay, this is, and this, this is about putting it on the ballot?
Yes.
So the citizens would decide. Peggy?
Well, since we're in a special meeting, I move that we put it on the ballot.
The 3%?
The 3%.
Okay. Roll call.
Jim second.
Well, Jim, second. Any, any additional discussion? Okay, well, roll call. Count, Mayor Brinkman?
No.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckman?
No.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Serenick?
No.
And Councilmember Valdez?
Aye.
It's four in favor with three. Okay, that one goes on. Next one is, I should have my thing. Direct mayor election, the popular one. Let me, before.
The one you brought up.
Yeah. Before, and Michael's got some more information, and I think Mike has some additional information. Are you going to say anything? No?
Which one?
The mayoral election thing?
Just the, the one.
Okay. Just clarification on this. This thing blew up a little bit more than I expected it to. The intent in bringing this is, it was, has been somewhat misinterpreted or at least misunderstood to be at some level a taking of power. This has absolutely nothing to do with power. The effort would be only to push the mayoral election to the community as opposed to at council. Doesn't add any power to the mayor's seat. The other thing I just wanted to make clear is, number one, it's, it's not a sort I'm going to die on. I mean, this is, if this is not something that has any level of popularity or, or interest in council, then I don't even think we need to spend a lot of time talking about it. But number two is that if in fact this was something that went on the ballot, that the citizens, it's just simply asking the citizens to decide if they want to do this. And it would not even affect, it wouldn't even go into effect until the 2015 council elections. So just wanted to, I guess, throw those issues or those comments out on the table. And Michael, did you have additional information there? Dad?
Thanks, Mayor. I just, I guess I'd reiterate, at least from my understanding of what the mayor had proposed, is that in essence, in its most simplistic terms, it would be taking no change really in anything in the charter other than saying that one of the three at larges would turn into a direct mayoral election. And as you can see from the handout that Mike had provided, there is a substantial number of communities that do it. There's a substantial number of communities that do it the way that we do it. And then with those who it's, Mike, can you pass those out? I'm sorry, I thought those were passed out. And within each of those, there's the nuances of how often do they rotate mayors, what is the authority within the mayor? But these are all operating within a council manager form of government. And I'm not sure that there's any interest, and I will stop talking until we hear that there's interest. But just to be clear, this, it's one of those, they both work, both systems work. And it's, if you're happy with what you have, then stick with it. And if you think there's opportunity, you can change it.
Any discussion?
Well, it was mentioned that one of the three at-large positions would become at-large for mayor only. There's another option that we could look at, and that's going to three districts in the city instead of four. And there'd be two people from each district in order to get the six. Could do it that way as well.
And I'm missing not mentioning Councilman Taylor's suggestion for the last minute.
That's two different questions, and they would have to be, I think, voted on separately.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
What are we trying to fix?
What was that?
What are we trying to fix? I mean, why? I mean, what is the benefit to the, the city of Littleton, the citizens? I haven't heard that part. I'd just like to hear for those of you in support of it, what is it?
Well, I think, I think what it does is it, it allows the citizens to select the mayor. I don't know that, you know, if, if it's, I don't know that we're trying to fix anything or we're just looking at, you know, my intention was just to look at doing this partly for that regard. And when you look at the municipalities that do it with the community electing the mayor, I mean, it's, that's the majority that, that, and I think whether, whether this is something that you guys want to do now or not, I think it's something that should at least stay somewhere on the interest level or somewhere on our attention level because I think that, you know, at some point, it may become more important that the citizens want to have a voice in that. But Jerry, I don't know that we're trying to fix anything that's broken. The other, the other part of this would put, or we had discussed putting the, the term at a four-year term because of the way that that would elect in. Jim?
Well, I, I agree with, with Debbie. There's nothing really broken about it, except it does allow the citizens at large to select who is going to be the mayor of the city as opposed to the seven of us deciding who's going to be the spokesman. And I just think there's a big advantage to having citizens decide that as opposed to us.
What is the advantage?
You get to vote for the mayor. Your wife does not.
Phil?
Well, in my comment is, you know, I, I realize by numbers, there might be a majority that do an at-large election. However, I think the way Littleton has worked is the collegial approach of a, of a council that actually selects a facilitator or a president of that body has much more preference because we're the ones that have to consistently show up on Tuesday evenings and actually work together.
Bruce?
I've gotten some citizen input on this one, and this is really visceral. People either love it or hate it. And, and I mean, there is not a middle ground on this. The issue that would concern me, though, is the process, the, the idea that Jim's proposing of the three districts or the idea that it's one of the people at large. I think it's serious when you begin to juggle around the system that has worked for 50 years and was put, more than 50 now, probably 70 years. When they put this charter together in the 50s and 60s and made this thing work, a lot of thought, I think, was given to that four, and four, four districts and three, and it's worked for a long time. The devil would be in the details on this, and I'm, based on the input that I'm getting, I don't think there's clarification among the understanding of those people who have an opinion, how we would do it. And so I, I think it's worthy of continued looking, but I don't think we have enough information to put it on a ballot in a clear way and consider it further.
Bruce?
I think Phil's comment was insightful. I, it's interesting, you look at this list, and some of the larger communities, Grand Junction, Pueblo, do their, Boulder, do theirs by council. Denver obviously does direct, but Denver's a strong mayor form of government. I don't know what some of these others are. I guess I'm, I'm kind of assuming if council does it, they're probably not strong mayor.
There's only two strong mayor in the state, and that's Colorado Springs and Denver. Everything else is council manager form of government.
Right.
As I said earlier, the nuances of, because in some cases, the mayor doesn't get to vote unless it's a tie.
Yeah.
And, you know, so there's nuances within that. But that's why I was trying to be clear in all of these, it's a council manager form of government. It's just a question of, as Phil pointed out, does the council choose a facilitator?
Right. No, I understand. I, I might be inclined to suggest that maybe what we do is, you know, do the community survey or Survey Monkey, something like this, or get it out there and try to get feedback from the community because I, Bruce, Councilmember Beckman indicated he'd had some feedback. I honestly haven't had much feedback other than a few comments just in general. Absent that, I'm probably inclined to stay where we are for the time being.
Peggy?
Yeah, I, I said this when this first came up. I think the people who draft. I think the people who drafted our charter and the citizens who approved it were really wise. They have a council governance point of view, the whole council. And although we generally elect the president of council to serve two years, technically, the president serves at the will of the council. So if for some reason, the kind of thing Phil talked about, facilitating the governance, the executive meeting piece of the whole council, if that's not working, then the council could, I don't think it ever has, said, hey, we wanna, we wanna replace you and not do the whole two years. But I think, I think the council approach, the whole council approach with the president is a stronger affirmation of seven people working together rather than one. So I can't see a reason to change that.
Jim?
I'm gonna go back and build a little bit on what Mr. Stallman said. If we want to do a survey of the citizens to see if they're interested or not, the best way to do that is advisory question on the ballot in November. An advisory question would be something like, are you interested in a direct election of a mayor for the city of Littleton? Or some, people who are a lot smarter than I am can figure what that question's gonna be. But that's the best way to get a survey of what the citizens really feel like, is put an advisory question. Therefore, if the question is no, we know where we are. If the question is yes, then it becomes effective in another two years, whenever we can get to the ballot question again before the citizens.
Bruce?
I guess, I understand your point. It probably comes down at some level to a combination of, what's it gonna cost to do, do it on the ballot directly versus to do a statistical sample and collect it in a different medium? Some, I think the one, the lodging tax, didn't it say 20K or something to put that on?
But all the questions are gonna be lumped together, so.
There's no incremental cost.
Absolutely not.
How's that, Wendy?
It depends on the county. Douglas County charges by the inch. Jefferson County charges us a flat rate. And Arapahoe County, it varies depending upon whether you've got a Tabor question on, which we will now because of the lodging tax. It's not going to significantly raise it anymore. It's not $20,000 per question, but it's adding, like you said, it's not an incremental raising of the cost for Arapahoe County, which will be our biggest. The Tabor question is going to add more than another question, just a regular question, because we have to go through the pros and cons.
Okay, all right, sorry. Thanks. Peggy?
So, asking, putting a question on the ballot, or even putting it on the website and asking people to express their views, if you're asking if they want to elect the mayor, you're begging a question, because we do not have a mayor. We have a president of council. So that's one thing. Then second, it'd be really interesting to me to see what the duties are of the so-called mayors of these other places. So, you know, does, does that mayor establish the, what, division, the focus of whatever? Or does the council do it, or does?
Is there the exact same as what we do?
Well.
It's not, there's no additional power.
Right. I'm just saying, we have something spelled out in how we operate and so forth. Anyway, I'm just saying, so the main point I'm making is, asking people if they want to elect the mayor is, first, you need to say, do you want to have a mayor, I think? Then, do you want to elect them, that person? Anyway, it's, it's a much more complicated issue.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
And the question, and the question is?
The question is that whether you want to put it on the ballot, is it yes? If you don't want to put it on the ballot, no.
Which question? The direct election, or would citizens?
How about if we're just interested in moving it forward?
Just moving it forward, Jim?
That's.
Do you want to, you want to make that motion?
Well, if I made a motion, I'd put it on the ballot as an advisory question in November 2013.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion, or you guys ready to vote?
It's an advisory ques-
Advisory question only. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cernanik?
No.
Councilmember Cole?
No.
Councilmember Stallman?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
No.
The motion fails, four to three.
Three to four. Okay, retail marijuana.
All right, and this one, just as a heads up, because originally, when we started this discussion, the council drilled down a lot into more of the administrative side in terms of setting policy around licensing and those kind of things. And Kristin and I are gonna be coming back to you with a, kind of a yes-no flow chart at a later date. But the question for you this evening is whether or not, I think, this is another one from Councilmember Taylor, do you want to put a marijuana tax on, a retail marijuana tax on the ballot for 2013?
The state law that's coming forward for us to vote will have an excise tax and will have a sales tax. Excise tax is 15%. The sales tax is 10%. Out of that 10%, the cities are rebated, for lack of a better term, 15% of about that on the point of sale. So we would get some portion of that, provided that the sales tax passes in November statewide. I would propose that we look at a specific city tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana products as a sale, as a separate sales tax in addition to whatever the city would, the state would do. And we will decide on what that percentage would be if, if support for doing that.
Bruce?
Does that, couple of questions. Does that, it presupposes we've addressed the retail issue and we allow retail sales? Do we need to do one before the other?
And I thought about that. We haven't made that decision yet.
Right.
But at some point in time, there's a possibility that a future city council will make that decision to move forward. I want to have this process in place if that ever happens. It's easier to do it now, when we don't know what we're going to be doing, because we haven't made a decision, than do it later, when we have made a decision that we're gonna do it, because then I think it becomes more problematic.
Do we know comparatively, you said 15% on excise, 10 on sales? What are the comparable numbers, for example, on cigarettes? Does anyone know? I don't know.
When we had a cigarette tax, I don't remember what it was, but we got a substantial amount of money on a cigarette when we had a sales tax on it.
Now, on the marijuana thing, though, I think if it's a 10%, tax to start with, the city only gets 1.5% of that 10%.
From the state?
Right, so it's not like we're getting.
No, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, yeah, there's.
And is that enough to cover whatever expenses we're gonna have added?
Well, and it goes, but it also comes around to ask, what are other communities doing? Do we have any, I mean, I guess the question is, what do you want to use as the amount?
And, you know, I had a, had been collecting what all the surrounding cities were doing, as reported in the newspapers. When I tried to pull my stuff together tonight, I could not find that at all. So I don't know what the cities are. Most of our surrounding cities have put a moratorium on that goes either to an advisory question, as Inglewood is doing in this one, to say, we go to a permanent ban in 2014. You cannot permanently ban it until, you cannot permanently prohibit it until 2014. You can do an advisory question this November, but you can't do a permanent one. Mike over there can correct me if I'm wrong, but he knows a lot more about this than I do, so.
Mike, you want to come up? And Kristin has a.
I just wanted to chime in that this would be in addition to our sales tax.
Correct, it'd be in addition to our sales tax.
So we're already gonna get?
So we'll get the, we'll get a portion of what the 10% on, and then we'll also get our city sales tax, and this would be an additional tax that we'd be taking to the voters.
And because surrounding cities are not allowing, according to the paper, retail sales, Inglewood, Centennial, Douglas County, Greenwood Village, I don't remember what they all, you know, Greenwood Village, I do remember that. I don't know what they were doing, but.
You're saying we could corner the market on this end of the table?
We're gonna have a corner on the market if we decide to move forward with retail sales. And therefore, it's lucrative, frankly. Denver was pulling in several hundred thousand dollars a year on just their regular sales tax on medical marijuana. When they moved to the recreational, it's called a different thing now, not recreational.
Adult use.
Adult use.
Adult, whatever it is, I can't remember. It's gonna be substantially more.
Yeah, but the question, I mean, in theory, it's, they're charging, they're, in theory, they're getting, they're incurring incremental cost, too, and the question is, are they coming out ahead, is, I guess, some of the issue. I don't know, we don't know.
And I think that part of that is, we don't know.
Right.
Except I'm just convinced that the 1.5% we would get from the state is not gonna cover our cost.
That's probably fair. Yeah, I understand.
So our sales tax is 7.25, right?
It's correct.
That's the total.
The city's three.
City gets three. You've got state, county, all that on that seven.
So we'd end up at four and a half if we get one and a half from the state.
Yeah.
Then the other thing I wanted just to chime in is that if we impose an additional sales tax, we have to collect and enforce that additional amount. So I don't know if Doug wants to address what the, what that administrative burden would be to us.
Part of the cost.
If.
I'm not prepared to answer that one.
Okay.
I would also add that, you know, these all have to go, and I think Jim was alluding to this, these all are going to, the communities have to take it to a vote of the people. So the councils in particular, communities, may want to tax it, but if the community chooses not to. So it's gonna be a long time ultimately until the whole market lends itself out in terms of how those taxations occur, because communities may choose not to take it forward in '13 and take it through in '14. It might fail in '13, they take it again in '14. I mean, there's all those nuances since these all will require votes of the people in all of these communities. So what you hear a particular community wanting to do may or may not pan out, just as we're having the conversation right now.
Bruce?
What's the annual fee for a retail establishment to the city? Is there a fee structure?
For the license?
For the license, yeah. I can't recall how that works.
I don't, we haven't, the state has one.
We have one, and it's, I'm pretty certain, $2,500 to get a new license. And then we have a renewal fee of 1,500, I think. I'd have to go back and look.
That's for a retail business?
That's for the medical.
That's for medical marijuana. We don't know what the structure is for retail yet, because.
No retail business, period. Was that, was your question?
You're talking about medical marijuana?
Yeah, for medical marijuana, I was just making the assumption we would have something similar or more or less a fee structure for initial and renewal in addition to sales tax. Trying to get the big picture.
Mike, do you know when the state is gonna have some more clarity on this?
Well, they've got the. They, they've passed the legislation.
Right.
It's being discussed here. There'll be a couple of questions on the, on the statewide ballot. And now it's just moving forward with, with what we've got. CML just put out kind of their overview of all the regulations that passed regarding this. So there's, there's information out there. It's, there's still some, some things that are lingering, though.
Yeah, and I, and I want to, I'm sorry, I want to reiterate, this is about a tax on it.
Yeah.
As I said, when I opened, I wanted to be very specific. We're gonna come back to you with an entire flow chart on yes, no, because there's different licensing pieces. None of that has to go to the voters. That's all policy set by you guys. But tonight, the question was, do you want to go to the voters and ask them about whatever?
Sales tax.
Whatever sales tax on this. You, I would have a base assumption that we will be collecting those fees that are commensurate with the cost of what it costs us to issue the initial license, issue the replacement, the annual renewal license, and those kind of things. This is strictly a tax, as somebody asked earlier, on the equivalence of cigarettes. That's what, this is not about all the process and procedural components. This is strictly a tax going into the general fund.
Peggy?
Unless you want to dedicate it to someone.
Two questions, I guess. There's, there's gonna be a session at CML related to the marijuana. So I'd suggest maybe we wait until our first study session after that, where we've sorted through some things. Then a question, is it possible to put on the ballot a question such as asking for authorization, or however it is, approving a tax up to a certain amount? We wouldn't necessarily have to go for that amount, but could be authorized up to a certain amount?
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
So as we then get more information about the fee, the licensing, the other issues, we could be changing that at certain times.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna push really hard here. This is a tax. We, if you, and I've talked to, I've talked to, so I'm gonna make some assumptions in this statement. But I've talked to PD. We have four existing medical licenses. I would assume that council is not going to expand the number, maybe I'm wrong in that. But what we found is there's virtually no cost to the city with that. We have, we don't have a lot of break-ins. We are probably making money, if you think about it that way. That's not what sales tax is about, but just since that's kind of how this conversation is going. The revenue that we receive is greater than the cost of providing that direct enforcement service that's out there. We don't handle the social services cost. We don't handle some of the issues that the state or the county, they're the ones who are really gonna be concerned about. Are they? That's why the state's gonna be looking at the statewide ballot. Are they gonna receive enough money to cover the cost that those organizations have? This is strictly, I'm gonna keep coming back to, this is strictly going to the voters and saying, do you want to tax this, almost, for lack of a better term, a sin tax on this? We don't have to wait for a CML conference. We've got, we've got the questions. City and county in Denver did a great job of flow charting. Denver's, or CML's got the information out. It's about what types of licensing do you want? Do you want to allow grows, those kind of things? So I realize you haven't had that information in front of you, but these are, it's two separate tracks of conversation.
No, I hear that, but I attended, I attended the CML session when we had marijuana, and we were developing, after that, we developed, we refined what we were working on. I just think that there may be some conversation that would be useful to us. So if we don't have to decide this tonight, I'm just suggesting we wait.
It'd be much easier for us to know whether or not you want us to start drafting the language, because we're gonna be running up against first readings and second readings on the ballot language, than to wait until after, because once we're into July.
Could we, could we maybe start with one question and then go to a second one? Do we want to tax it?
Yes.
We could have a yes, no.
That's our question before you.
If we want to tax it, that's easy enough. But the ballot would have to say how much, or at least give us authorization for like 100% or whatever.
Correct.
Right.
Yep, and that's our question to you this evening, is do you want to tax?
That piece.
That's all we're asking you this evening. We're not asking any of those policy questions.
I move that we tax it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Bruce?
I was trying to be clear, Peggy. I apologize.
Discussion? No? Yeah?
Just when, when the product is transferred from a grower to a seller, the tax that is applied at that time is not a sales. the tax that is applied at that time is not a sales tax. Is that correct?
The wholesale to a retail.
That's the excise tax.
It's the excise tax.
That's the excise tax.
So we're only talking about from the retailer to the customer?
That's right.
And this is an additional tax to our 3%.
Correct.
Right.
Jim? And I go to, politically speak, I think that question going before the voters would pass. Even though the voters in this city voted to allow it, you would think that they didn't want to tax it. But I think the reverse of that is true now, that if we come forth and say we want to tax it, the voters would say yes. And I'd like to amend Peggy's motion by making, she said, just whether to tax it or not, to make it a 3% tax.
Well, I was doing in a two-step process, figuring if we could agree to tax it, then we could get to the other.
Okay, I'll withdraw.
Kristin, did you have something?
I was just looking, I, I was just trying to look to see, I think we may have the ability to impose an excise tax, to a local excise tax, do you know?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
It did not make it, just sales.
That probably wouldn't matter, because at least in medical, we haven't allowed that aspect of it, so, okay.
Okay, ready to vote? Roll call. I don't, I do, I have a quick question for clarification. This is simply to put on the ballot to ask the voters if they would let us tax it?
No, this is a two-step process.
Just for council, do you want to tax?
Then the bill-
Oh, oh, this isn't going-
Then we figure out stuff later.
Right.
So this is just us?
Yeah.
Do we want to tax it?
Yeah, before we then move to-
Before we argue about how much and what form.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. My only comment before we do roll call is, I'm 150% against even retail on this. I will vote to tax it if we end up having to have retail. I would prefer to tax it, but is, by no means should be construed as an approval vote on anything other than that.
Yes, this is a narrow question.
For me, anyway. Okay, roll call.
Can, can I amend my question then? This fits with what you're-
Your motion.
My motion. So if we decide to allow medical marijuana, do we want to-
Adult use.
Adult use.
I mean, excuse me.
That's complicating.
The adult use, then do we want to, I'm going to be taxing it, so that takes care of your issue.
Now you need a second.
Now we need a second.
Nobody wants to modify the amendment there. It was just to try to accommodate Debbie, so.
But I think it's understood, Peggy.
Yeah.
Okay, then forget it.
Roll call.
Wait a minute.
I need a break.
All right, you guys.
So are we back to?
Yeah.
The first one, her amendment didn't get a second.
Phil, Phil's seconded the original, so we're still-
We're still on the original, Peggy's original.
Right, good, cool.
Okay. We're good? We're good. All right.
Repeat the question so that we're clear on-
Do you want to tax retail marijuana? Through the city of Littleton. All right, here we go. Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Sernanik?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And I'd move that we can't tax it at the rate of 3%. That'd be part of the question, part of the ballot question.
Well, I'll second it for discussion, but I've got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, how, on what basis are you coming up with 3% other than that's what the news today?
I picked it out of the air, Bruce, that's exactly how it is.
So why not 10%?
Because I think it gets to a point where there's diminishing returns. 3% I think has a chance of passing. 10% I think would, probably, people would say, you know, you're looking just to make money off of this, and I think that's too much. I think 3% is acceptable to the people.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm not opposed, personally, I guess I'd be more inclined to maybe throw 5% on the table, but I guess we're sort of just playing blind, pin the tail on the donkey.
Well, you always can go back, and future councils can go back and change that to increase it from 3% to 5%.
But that's got to go to the voters, because it's a tax.
Yeah, it's something between now and whenever it's got to get certified, we can do that. Or I guess, yeah, we could, and that's the point, if we're going to send it to the voters to begin with, it'd be nice to have something that we think we're comfortable, it's got some justification.
But this is in addition to the sales tax.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, this is completely incremental.
And additional to what the state is going to refund down to us, which is 1.5.
1.5.
It's just a special niche-
Yeah, no, it's-
Process we've got that we can do.
The surtax.
Sort of.
Well, and there's also, I mean, there's a, there's going to be a legal room or issues around this, because primarily it's cash business, and the auditing ends up being a little more complex. So there is some additional cost, at least to, at this stage, in dealing with it. But I, kind of, you know, leaning towards where Deb is, this is not a vote or an issue to make a decision on whether we're going to allow retail.
Right.
And at this point, it's for establishments.
Bruce?
I respect Jim's comment that we've kind of taken it out of the air. Is there anything the finance director could tell us about that anticipated cost to the city of auditing a cash-only business that might lend credence to us having additional tax revenue for that product?
I, I would agree, it would increase our costs, and we would probably use our outside vendor to do that auditing. And in lieu of, you know, there might end up being even special audit firms that specialize in doing that type of audit work, but I would anticipate higher costs. Don't we, don't we audit now, though, those firms? Because we have four businesses now. Right, right, all of them are currently subject to audit, that's correct. And so we're really not, I mean, not to counter that, but, I mean, unless, unless the council expands the number of businesses as, as part of the policy piece, the council, they get first dibs on transferring to, from, first dibs, that's a technical term, on transferring from medical marijuana to retail marijuana. So, I mean, once we get through these policy questions, it could be very real that what the council ends up with is the exact same four companies now operating in a retail establishment. So there is no incremental cost to us at all, and you're starting to see some banks start to get back into that willingness to do it, so it may move away from a cash transaction. But I'm going to, I don't believe we're going to see substantial increase of costs in either enforcement and talking to PD, or necessarily in that audit, unless the council drastically changes and we have eight, 10, 12, 15 businesses that are allowed.
But she's there with the hands.
But just to follow on.
Peggy and Bruce.
No, I'm not, we're not-
To the follow-on, since the Tabor issue, we have to place a pro and con statement. And I don't think, we picked it out of the air, it's a really strong pro statement, so I was looking for something that would justify it.
But it's, it's a tax, and it matches what you just did for lodging.
Well, it doubles, it, it just doubles our city tax, because it goes, it would, because we're currently at three, it would add three, and then whatever the state throws in, and it just mucks it up.
The lodging is 3% also, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So that may be the-
It's a rational.
Peggy and then Bruce.
So, hey, Michael.
Michael.
So, this is tangential question. Is it possible for us to charge an audit fee for cash-only business?
Yeah, any, and I was, actually, Kristin and I, so this is not a fee, so you do not have to, no, but yes, yes, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, if we have that expense of additional cost to order the cash-only business, we can, and we don't need permission.
We were going to put it on, now we're going to figure out what.
Now we're asking, what, 3%?
Okay, Bruce?
I was going to, I guess, ask Jim, would you, and would you go for a friendly amendment to say up to 5% instead of specifically 3%? Under the logic that we could then look at it and sort of flex it as need be, once we have more information.
You know, there's often questions that come on the ballot that says up to something.
Yeah.
And it's a wiggle, waggle term, waffling term, and I'd much rather be very precise, very exact, of exactly what we want to do, and not waffle around with it.
Fair enough. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to put it at a 3% additional tax. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call. Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Councilmember Sernanik?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
Yes.
Let's move on.
All right, I'm going to-
Charter changes.
Charter changes.
So where, where we started, Councilmember Cole, probably well over a year ago at this point, had met with me and discussed some charter amendments, and there were a bunch in here. I'm going to try to shortcut this with a proposal and see what you guys think on this.
Do we know what you're looking at?
We don't have it.
You all should have it.
Suspic.
Oh, it's active.
Everyone's got it.
Which we got tonight.
Do we have to read it?
You do not have to read it. I heard you, Jim. You do not have to read it. I'm going to, I told you, I'm going to try to shortchange it.
It's just like our US Congress, we don't have to read it.
For different, for different reasons, yes, I'm not asking you to. So in, so Kristin and I went through this.
Just to clarify, for council, this, the, this is authorizing, all of these votes are authorizing staff to bring back language. So we're going to see this stuff more refined.
Yeah, council has to, via ordinance, approve the ballot language, first and second readings, and there'll be IGAs with the county for the, for all of it. So you will see all of this. Thank you, Mayor.
And again.
And again, and again, yes, ad nauseam. All right, so we, in the edits or proposed changes that Councilman Cole had brought up, and Kristin and I had sat down, and I actually had sat down previously with our Kirsten Crawford and gone through this as well, but recently Kristin and I sat down and really broke it into kind of four groupings, as we thought about how the ballot would work through. And you don't have to read this right now, just listen to me, because I've got a proposal, you can read it, but I'm trying to save you guys some headache. So there's, that's a quarter to 10, too late, sorry. There are meetings, and some examples on that are things like public hearings on first reading in addition, in addition to second reading for general codification and adoption of standard code. So that's what you guys do essentially in your legislative rules. So it's codifying or charter amendment to match how you're operating, and in fact, that was one of the things that we had talked about. There's some outdated language in some of the sections that are there, dealing with meetings and votes and different things. There's a grouping in posting requirements, back in 1956, I think is when this was written, and certainly common language throughout the, I think, probably Colorado and probably the nation. The internet was not contemplated, and how you posted and communicated has changed and will continue to change. So getting language that can better stand the test of time relative to how we post and communicate out information, even using words like website may not be appropriate, because website, the term may disappear at some time in the future. But what is the appropriate language to address postings, those types of things? There's several edits in the bidding world where dollar and value of the dollar was very different at the time, and we don't do things for 100 bucks anymore. And then there are several administrative cleanup components, definitions, there's sections that don't apply to us anymore. We don't deal with health services, we no longer have a fire department. You heard earlier, we have a fire department that we have some liability on its pension plan, or potentially, and then some grammatical cleanups. And so the original proposal that Kristin and I had was to walk through these and see whether or not you said yes or no to each one of these, and potentially on a ballot, you could break them into these four groupings. But subsequent to this, and actually, part of what came out of the interviews that the council had with the firms, was the idea of putting together a charter advisory committee. And actually, having you guys appoint a group of citizens, and yourselves, if you want to be included, I mean, it's a broad breadth, and actually going through this on a, on a fairly in-depth basis, or to whatever extent you would like that group to do it, and have them come back with some recommendations, and how you would group those, and maybe there's some broader changes that would be recommended. And that also, I think, comes in light with citizens who have concerns about the executive section privilege and the issue around rezonings and matching more the state language, you can incorporate that into that scope within it. So you could, for example, set up a committee that would look at everything, starting on page one and end on the last page, and come back with recommendations. You could tell them, you only want them to look at certain sections of it, or you could ultimately say you want them to look at some sections specifically, but really the broad base, base of all of this. The thought on doing that is, it would kick this conversation really to 2014 from a ballot perspective, because I don't think you can have that kind of in-depth, thoughtful, intentional conversation and public outreach in the time that it would take us to go to 2013. But it's probably a more appropriate conversation, rather than picking a few things out, but really having an in-depth look at it. And you guys, through development of a charter advisory committee, which has been used in other communities, we've got some examples that we could bring you, if there's any interest in this. You know, you've got full control of it in the sense of how you appoint, how many people you appoint to this, what duration, what public process you want to incorporate, all of that. So I just wanted to kind of short-circuit this and see if there was any interest in that. If there's not, we can start walking through this, but that seemed to have some merit and was worthy of conversation before we go through grammatical cleanups, so.
Peggy?
So I, I do think there's some things in this that we ought to go ahead with. There's some definitions in this, for example. I mean, a lot of this are things that I had questions about, as things have come up, and I thought, well, jeez, why, why aren't they in here? Clarification or whatever, the definitions. I think it would be great to have a charter committee, but I see that on a different kind of level than these kinds of things. But maybe, maybe not all of these things, but some are.
And some of those, if, if we do want to spend the time to go down, and I do realize it's hitting 10 o'clock, that I think there are some things that, Kristin, there's some comment, just using the definitions as an example, that there is common legal definition that we may or may not, council making that decision, want to put in the charter, or ask the citizens whether they want to incorporate in the charter, because those definitions have ebbed and flowed and changed over the years. But there are common legal definitions in some of these, so, not, not to drill down, but we would have to have a conversation, I think, about all of these, of whether or not they truly, this is our, you know, guiding document, and to keep it thin and appropriate, so.
If what you just said, the definitions might change, then we need to identify where they should be, because when somebody's new on council, they don't understand, and citizens don't necessarily understand what, what the devil they mean.
Well, and we could, yeah.
Phil?
Since this is the first time I've seen the document with some of the suggestions in it, I'm going to move that we direct staff to present alternatives on a charter advisory committee, form, charge, et cetera. And if there are administrative items that beg to be dealt with this year, those also be identified.
Second.
Motion, a second discussion. Jim?
Well, I'm not for sure that my discussion necessarily is going to fit your motion, but-
Then you want to call the question?
No, I do not. In looking at this, it, it seems to me that there were a number of different issues in there, and I'm wondering if this went forward, if it wouldn't have to be each, each area- in there, and I'm wondering if this went forward, if it wouldn't have to be each area a separate vote because of the table limitations on single-issue ballot questions.
And Kristen can again drill into it, but it was her research that really came up with those four groupings that I identified. And you could lump, in theory, whatever council wanted under those general questions with the detail of the amendments under that. So in theory, you could summarize the four, you could choose to, I don't know how many items there are in here, but you could do each one as a separate. That might cost a little bit more.
Yes, there would be no, you know, definitely no problem with us doing each of them separately, but I think we could also group them, and we'd worked it down to four or five groupings if we wanted, but there certainly would be no reason why we couldn't do them all individually as well.
Second question, if we went to a charter commission, and I really wasn't too enthused about that, but the more I think about it, the more I think that that might be a really best way to go forward. But I would feel much more comfortable if there again was an advisory question on the ballot that says, are the citizens interested in having a charter commission appointed to study all aspects of the charter, to update it, to give better definitions, to do all of that? I think that would give a portfolio for the people who are trying to make changes to the charter that says, the citizen says, yes, we would like to have some changes and have our charter updated. After all, it's over 60 years old.
Just to clarify, we like using the term advisory committee. It's not a charter commission, which I think of as what you set up when you're establishing a new charter or repealing and putting in place a new charter. This would just be an advisory committee to you. They would make recommendations. You could choose not to go forward with any of them and pass the ordinance to put those changes on the ballot. You could choose to accept all of them. You could choose to disband, and the next year, put together another committee to bring forward recommendations. So they're simply going to provide recommendations to you, and you can pick and choose which you want to then move forward to the ballot.
Other questions? Okay. Phil, the motion that's on the table is to ask staff...
Direct staff to present issue or the information and options on an advisory committee, charter committee, and if the administrative, if there are administrative changes, bring those forward also.
Okay. All right, ready to vote?
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Brink, or Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cernanik?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Valdez?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a...
Ticket tax.
Ticket fee, ticket tax?
Yep.
Jim, that was yours?
Yes, and I just wanted to have the discussion with council about ticket fees or ticket taxes. We can, as a council, can levy a fee on all ticket sales made within the city. Or we can go to a tax question for the voters to decide if they wanted to have a tax on all ticket sales. And that would be ticket sales that you would do at Supers, at Angelo's, whenever they were still in business, they did tickets. LPS does tickets, Town Hall. Any other?
Would it be like Hudson Gardens?
Hudson Gardens.
Alamo?
Alamo, movie tickets, anything like that. It could be 10 cents per ticket, it could be 25 cents per ticket, and we can do it as a fee. Or if you want to go to a percentage, which is, I think, a little more complicated to calculate. If you do a percentage, it probably would have to be a tax to the people. If we do it as a fee, the seven of us can decide whether to go forward with it and what the amount is going to be.
Any conversation? Do you want to make a motion?
Well, I'd really like to have some conversation about it before we make a motion.
Anybody?
Kristen, I think that we'd have to, if the council went the direction of the fee, we'd have to determine what the use of those revenues were going to be and the determination of what that fee was going to be. So you have to dedicate it to a particular use. I don't know if you've thought about where you want to allocate those revenues, like roadway improvements, because they're driving on the road to get to Hudson Gardens, or I don't know.
I've thought of several things, the roadway being one of them. But if we go with a fee, we've got time to have that discussion, because it wouldn't go into effect until January of 14.
So...
If we did, it's part of the budget.
Yeah, be part of a budget discussion.
So really, the difference, or the question is, do you want to take it to the voters and make, call it a tax?
Right.
Okay.
But I thought the fee side of it had to be...huh?
Cost.
Yes. Well, it had to, you had to have, yeah, you had to be neutral. You had to incur so much cost, and you charged a fee to defray the cost you were incurring. So I mean, I know you, I understand what you said. I'm not quite sure how we get to play twister and figure out what the depreciation of the roads are for people going to Alamo.
I just use that as an example, because I'm sure there's others. I mean, you could do it as, you could do it for landscaping purposes and beautification of the city as a portion of running in through what Kelly was talking about earlier. If we're going to get more active and involved in marketing of the community, you could use those dollars for marketing, and for the advertising for it. There's a variety of things you could do. I just wanted to be clear that you've got to have that nexus, so we'd have to identify that, really.
No, I agree with that. I think, and I guess my comment would be, I don't have major heartburn over putting it on the ballot, going to people saying you want to charge 25 cents a ticket or whatever the number is. But I think we're going to have a challenge trying to establish some quantification of a reasonable nexus. So I guess I'd be more inclined to go the tax route if everybody wants to do that.
Okay. Peggy?
So I would not support, just as an example, I would not support taxing anything that the schools are doing. None of their tickets or whatever. I think we already have something in code that we put in, I think in '08 or '09, somewhere in there, that if they go door to door selling cookies or magazines or whatever, we don't tax that. I can't see taxing, I mean, feeing for those things. And I tend to be inclined to not want to have a fee for any of those things. That helps us draw more, I think, and get more spending on other things. That's kind of what my initial thinking is.
Anybody else?
Well, I guess if you're going to have a ticket tax, you need to have a ticket tax, or a ticket fee, I'm sorry. If you're going to have a fee, you have a fee for everybody and exempt no one.
Well, I know, but that's what I'm saying, is I would not, I would not want to have it for anybody.
Any other discussion?
Is that like football games at Littleton High School?
Yes, sir.
We're calling it, you're calling it?
Anytime you have a ticket that's sold in the city, whether it's at King Supers, whether it's at Angelo's, whether it's at Hudson Gardens, whether it's at LPS, whether it's Town Hall Arts Center, wherever there's a ticket sold, if it's a change of money for a ticket to enter or to do something or take a chance.
The Colorado Center for the Blind, $20 tickets for their event, Humane Society events.
Another 25 cents for each one of those tickets?
Did you make a motion?
Yes, we have a motion. No, we don't have a motion. We're just having discussion about it.
So would that apply if people say donation, give a donation for this? I mean, a lot of places call it that. And it's not a charge, it's a donation, but everybody knows it's a charge.
It's not a ticket?
Hmm?
It is not a ticket?
Yeah. You know, some of those kinds of events, right? Suggested donation is, but the only way to get in is if you give that donation.
I don't, I don't see that's a ticket. If I have a suggested donation, go to a chamber function, that's...
No, that's not that kind. I'm trying to remember where.
Well, look, if the Humane Society, when they do an event, instead of charging $50 for a ticket, they would just say, to get in, you need to give us a $50 donation. Does that skirt the ticket fee issue? Which I imagine...
Probably does.
People would try to do that.
How about if I just make a direct motion that says, we will not do a tax on tickets, we will do a fee of 25 cents on every ticket sold in the city?
Any second for that? No second?
No more discussion.
Any more discussion on that?
Not for me. What's our next issue?
Okay. Our next issue is boards and commission liaisons. Bruce?
There's been, I think the issue is we, about a year ago, or a little more than a year ago, changed the orientation towards away from council, direct council liaisons to various boards and commissions, instead inviting less frequent but more in-depth, perhaps, conversation at subsequent council meetings. So we've had planning commission come in for conversation with council a couple of times. Historic preservation has been in, licensing has been in at least twice.
We have the others scheduled.
Huh?
We have, all the others are scheduled.
Yeah. Some of the feedback we've gotten, or some of the feedback I've gotten, I won't speak for everyone, but I've heard comments on and off about not, it's maybe not quite as satisfying for certain people to not have the experience of having council directly involved with some of these meetings as liaisons. Maybe the communication is too infrequent, maybe there's not sufficient depth of, or maybe there's disconnect between boards and commissions and council as a result of less frequent interaction. And so the conversation was to perhaps direct, pardon me, direct the boards and commissions task force to revisit the issue of liaisons, determine if it makes more sense to revert to the old form, to have council members attend various boards and commission meetings, and then have the task force determine which boards and commissions should have a liaison reestablished. Is that, that's fair. So that's the issue. Can make a motion to that effect, or we can talk about it, or whatever your pleasure is.
Peggy?
I would actually like to short circuit that and suggest, and move that, that council have liaisons to any boards or commissions that would like to have one. Because I've been talking to some folks too, and they said they really miss that connection, they would like to have that connection. They're, anyway, so that would be what I would move.
Okay, you want to make a motion? Okay, that was your motion? Second, please? No second?
I'll second it.
Got a second?
Now tell me again what your motion was.
Well, council have liaisons for any board or commission that would like to have one.
How do you?
The board or commission designates that they would like to have us back as a liaison as opposed to us telling them we're coming.
Yes.
Because I've had the very same from a board as well, saying...
And the issue would be, as we used to do, if we were going to one that was quasi-judicial and they were discussing something that might come to us, then people accuse themselves. They step outside while all that's going on, and then if the meeting continues after that, they go back in.
Bruce?
One of the thoughts with respect to letting the boards and commissions task force consider it was to try to standardize at some level the communication between council and the board, or a board. I don't know if in the past there was a degree of variability, but perhaps with guidelines specifically indicating what the level of expectation for communication is, there might, it might be a better conveyance. So that was a reason to perhaps have the task force do it as a precursor.
Bruce?
When we went from what we were to what we are now, we did create a document that spelled it out, and I think there's some value to creating another document. And so I think that there is some value to the boards and commissions task force doing that. And I agree that communication, we had said that if we didn't feel communication was occurring, we would relook at, I think that's where we are now.
Okay, so the motion is to have them request us back. We have a second on that. Does anybody want to amend that? You want to vote on it? It does not bring back the task force.
Well, I guess I'd amend it to say we have the task force intercede first.
Okay.
I think that's a separate motion, and if that's the...
Well, what if we do this? What if we go ahead and vote on your motion, and then we have, I don't think we need to vote on another motion, but I think if everybody's in agreement that the board, the commission task force needs to be the hub of monitoring on this, okay?
And I think, I think that's more important. Rather than the current members of any board and commission, we ought to look at what's actually going to work for all and take a bigger look. So I'm against the specific motion. I'm in favor of a review, which is one of the things that was planned.
Okay, ready to vote?
I'm sorry, what do we vote?
We're voting on Peggy's motion. And let's just vote on Peggy's motion. It has nothing to do with the boards and commissions task force. And if we're going to make a motion, a second one, we can.
Shall we repeat the motion?
Yes.
Counsel, the motion is to have counsel, or council have liaisons for any board or commission that would like to have one.
So if you want the board and commission task force part of this, this is not included in that motion. Okay, ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay.
Councilmember Beckman?
No.
Mayor Brinkman?
No.
Councilmember Cernanik?
No.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
No.
Okay, motion fails.
Somebody, Bruce, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, so move that the, we reconvene the boards and commissions task force to revisit the issue of council liaisons to the boards and commissions with appropriate communication guidelines.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? Roll call.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cernanik?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
I'm sure.
Okay. So, Jim?
Can I ask one question? You handed out tonight this charter. Tell me, the red ink and the blue ink, I don't understand who's doing what, who made the suggestions, who made the changes and suggestions?
These are, these all came from Councilmember Cole.
Even red and blue?
Yeah, that was a combination of different staff members editing the same change and just working on.
Actually, to clarify...
So the red or Peggy's with the blue is staff?
No. So some of this is depending who actually was making it and what order things got made. So sometimes you got blue because it was after an initial draft. But all of these, I believe all of these I discussed with Kirsten. And she was supportive of, as I recall, because she's the one that built the file, I think.
Yeah, so there was, there have been several discussions over the time. The document that you have in front of them, because there is not agreement on either the attorney's office or necessarily even from the manager's office, that these are all good things. I think they are worthy of discussion for it, and... And Kirsten and I had gone through it at the time. And then, as I said more recently, Kristin and I had gone through. The document was created, a combination of me from my notes with Peggy and the document that she gave me, and had given Kirsten a copy of that same one. And then Becky, who took some of my notes, just from a process and timing standpoint, and edited. But everything came from, from, and from the document that Peggy had given us to trying to take that and actually put it into a red-line format. It's just either, it's either my interpretation, or Becky's interpretation of my notes. But it's all staff at this point, through Peggy's recommendations, or comments, or questions.
What are you gonna bring back to us?
We're gonna bring back to you some options on the Charter Commission, Charter, I'm sorry. Charter...
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, CAC, and some different ways that you could put that together, and if there are any items that we believe could, or should, need to go forward in 2013.
Based on what's in here?
Based on the list that's in here.
I'd also, even though I know we've motioned out, but I'd like to, you indicate that there's some disagreement as to some of these things, and some maybe second opinion. I'd like to know what those, what is, why, you know, what is a pro and con? And also, I guess we can go back to the original charter and look at what was changed, but...
Point of order? Are you defining complete staff work?
Yeah, I guess I would say, why don't we do that in terms of if, if in the analysis of what should move forward now, we identify that? Because I think that's, because if it's, if it's something that the council ultimately says, "Let's throw it to the advisory commission," then there's not a lot of, it's not worth a lot of the council conversation around it. The detail would be in, and the minutia and the debate would come in, something that you want to put forward to the ballot, on the ballot this year.
I guess you'd have to be making that determination as to what should, what's most important to get to the ballot this year on it.
Yeah, and that'll be, that'll be a discussion that Kristin and I can have around those impediments that, along with the department heads, are. Are there things that are, and Wendy as well, are there things that are getting truly in our way of being able to do our work or meet the intent of what the charter has at this point, so...
Okay.
And I'll follow up with you, Peggy.
Cool. All right, so we are now to the exec session. Bruce, do you want to...
Yeah, I guess, quick clarification, I'll read it, but we've got, the exec session is two, and then on the agenda is three considerations of the contract, so I assume...
We will be coming back in.
Perfect, okay. "I move to convene an executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute 24-6-402 sub 4 sub E for the purposes of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiation, and instructing negotiators regarding the City Attorney Legal Services Contract with the firm of Kissinger &amp; Fellman P.C. Included in the executive session would be all of council, the city manager, and the deputy city attorney." I think we want Kristin in. So yes, and the deputy city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Councilmember Serenick?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
Aye.
Okay. Five-minute break, and then we'll... And we will come back in here after our meeting. We do have a, make, item number three.
And need a motion?
I move that council accept the draft contract as reviewed by both the city and the firm of Kissinger-Feldman to engage Kissinger-Feldman for city attorney services.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Any vote?
Yep.
Call.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cernanek?
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdez?
Yes.
The motion carries.
We adjourned. Don't forget, you guys, we have a breakfast Thursday. And if you got my, did everybody get my email?
About which one?
It said an email about the, it's about the, yeah, you should be, the Littleton Boulevard and Broadway businesses. We invited 40, we have six, maybe seven coming. So if you know any of those, then you can reach out, reach out to them.
For Thursday's breakfast?
Yeah. Well, we sent 40 invitations. I know you, we've got the South Metro Chamber looking at...